Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 9th, 2024 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. As a preliminary matter, you may see that this evening, through some omission somewhere, we do not have amplification. So I'll be asking all members of the board or anyone making a presentation to keep their voice up as best as possible. If anyone in the audience is having difficulty hearing, I would just invite you to come forward. We'll do the best we can. This is a continuation of hearing 09323, Falmouth Southly LLC requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 300 units of rental apartments throughout five separate buildings, a clubhouse and amenities. The subject property is located at 0 and 375 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth. I'll take a moment and introduce members of the board to the public. Starting at the audience's far left is Jerry Katamis. He's an associate member. Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm currently serving as chair. Scott Peterson, who is our vice chair. Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk. And Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary, as well as George Pucci, who is special town council of the Zoning Board of Appeals for this development. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants in public to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing. To begin the chairing, the clerk will read from the public announcement, hearing report information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representatives will then have time to make a presentation. Time may be extended by the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be asked to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project and can include an opinion in favor or opposition or to ask questions about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. The microphone again is not amplifying your voice, but it is for the benefit of FCTV viewers. Once the board has had sufficient information, the hearing will be closed. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and make a motion to approve or deny the application. Motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of three members, a majority, is required for the approval of a comprehensive permit. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decisions may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A and B. So as indicated, the one item on tonight's agenda is the continuation of 375 Sandwich Road. We have had a proposed change to the layout. So at this point, unless the board would like to proceed otherwise, I will ask the applicant to explain the changes they have submitted to the board today.
For the record, I don't know if this is amplifying or not, but for the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. So we definitely want to start off with the possible significant change, positive responses to the things that we have heard. Just briefly to tell you what we think we should also do, because we should also do tonight, because we did submit other material as well, responsive to the last hearing, we sent in...
The microphone's not working.
I know, the microphone's not working. I'll do my best. You can all move closer. It's all right. So we submitted additional information prior to tonight's submission of a possible significantly revised plan. And so when we talk about that and we hope that we will get some positive feedback, because we think that that speaks very significantly to really the biggest items that you have expressed so far. We still think it would make sense to go through the updated and additional conditions that we submitted last Friday, almost a week ago, because they would be apropos to really anything that is hopefully approved. Likewise with waivers, slight updates, and then agree on next steps. So just briefly, for the benefit of the public, what this concept plan, and we will put it up on the screen, and Phil Cordero will explain it to you, but the concept would be really in effect what you have strongly suggested, moving the buildings, the basic developed area, west by about 400 or 500 feet. I think it's 400 feet. That would free up land at the rear, closer to one neighborhood, and also the area that people are concerned about with the Coonamisit River watershed. That would free it up for the possibility of it being sold to some nonprofit land group. Could be the town, but that's more complicated. We understand, by the way, that the approach that the town prefers at this point and any nonprofit that could be involved is that we go through the board, which of course we agree, we know we have to. We hope we get real positive response from you tonight. But we would have to work out a condition that says that the sale, and being very upfront, it would have to be for fair market consideration. But it's a significant parcel of about five acres. Phil, we'll go through it. About, oh, okay. I guess it's changed, but Phil will go through that with the concept plan in a minute. So that would have to be a condition to be worked out, that that would have to be consummated. And it would, in essence, the number of units would be the same. It would shorten the road coming in from Sandwich Road. And that's really all I'll say about it at the moment. If there's positive feedback, we would agree to hopefully a workshop and have one more hearing, if there's positive feedback, to pursue that. And as I said, after the presentation and questions, and I know you're really just absorbing it, but we do think it's an important possibility for you to consider, which really, as I said, speaks to the significant issues. So let me turn to Phil, and the slide will hopefully go on the screen. And Phil, you can come up and walk everybody through the plan.
Another thing that I did want to say when we get further on, which is relevant whether or not we keep considering this plan, as we hope you will, we have had the feedback now, the report from CEI. We've now had positive and completely satisfactory responses from all of the peer review folks involved. Van Ass on traffic, CEI now, I think that was Stormwater, and Beals &amp; Thomas on the other matters related to civil engineering. So we do think, as we've said, but with the CEI, that was the last report to come in, that we really have responded, and our professionals, essentially most of that is Phil, and of course our traffic expert, we've satisfied your own consultants. So basically, that's all we can do, and we think that it would be appropriate if we don't get feedback from you positive on the proposed change, that we've done really all that's required and, you know, would consider closing the hearing. We hope that you will respond positively, in which case we would agree to one more hearing. Thank you.
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates, civil site engineer. Just to walk you very quickly, the board, through the plan that's on the screen, please keep in mind, as I discuss it, it is very much what we consider a pencil sketch. It's just sort of a working idea of things that we can do. It's not fully engineered, subject to final detailing, of course, but it presents to you an idea. Given that we would still need to do engineering on the site, we're actually quite fortunate on the existing land that the existing parcel is relatively flat. So our ability to move the site sort of in a wholesale way would not materially change our infrastructure elements, stormwater, sanitary sewer, et cetera. So we stand here with confidence that, you know, should the plan ultimately get traction, we could certainly put in place all of the pertinent details. So as we walk in off of Sandwich Road, the entry remains the same. It's still the divided boulevard roadway, but we picked up on the concept that we heard at the last meeting of really shortening that driveway coming into the site rather than pulling it up. And you can see underneath here is the old imagery, so that way the board and the public can see where the changes are potentially taking place. So we shortened the alignment of that roadway and really came as straight through that easement as we could. That roadway is still about 800, 900 feet from Sandwich Road to the end in here, but significantly shorter than we had it by removing the curvature. The building layout, the core of it, is still by and large the same. It's still four buildings around a central quad, a main head building that is perpendicularly placed, but the entirety of that layout is, as Peter mentioned, shifted 400-plus feet from the former line, from the property line inward. So there's generally this line here, and if I were to draw a box around this line wrapping the property line, it's about five and a half acres of land that would be preserved in its natural state. The parking lot around the buildings, per the pencil sketch, is exactly the same. So if you overlaid the two, it generally follows that layout, save for a few geometric modifications, where we've been able to tighten up the courtyard layout a little bit further, move it more northerly, and moving it northerly creates another sort of parceled area highlighted by this rectangular zone along the southerly property boundary, which is about three acres based on this note of potential natural tree save area on the southerly side of the site. And we were able to do that on this pencil sketch. The board may recall that Building A, which is the longer building here, we had an integrated clubhouse, which made that building longer. We've taken that clubhouse, put it back as a standalone element, which is relatively similar to one of the very earlier plans that we presented to the board, but it allows us to sort of shorten the width between the end of Building A and the gable end of Building A that consolidated the site, that allowed for the buffer zone that I'm showing you here on the bottom, that allowed the site to be moved northerly while still keeping in place all of the infrastructure that we need to. We still need to do work on the clubhouse element as you're coming in, cleaning up circulation, making sure that would be pleasant and a sense of arrival and functional and organized in an efficient manner. But the pencil sketch concept is you would come in off of our main roadway, would have a separate parking area that you could enter into the clubhouse zone, again, keeping in mind, that's where packages go, that's where mail center would be, that's where the operational staff would exist. So they would have their dedicated parking area. We'd have amenities located just behind it. Crosswalks, sidewalks, pedestrian access, would make all those connections. It's not shown in this plan, but certainly we would provide those. We have changed some infrastructure elements. Given the layout, we do lose some real estate. So we've tucked in some stormwater management areas here. This would be an open air surface basin to retain stormwater created by the runoff from the buildings and the parking and so forth, and that would be allowed to collect and ultimately recharge into the soil underneath, again, all in keeping with stormwater standards, the design guidance, et cetera. The limiting factor in terms of how far forward we moved it remains the power line easement. So that is drawn in the stretches well. It's generally in here by these two outlines. So we brought it as close as we could within our ability to construct adjacent to and through that easement, which the through is really just pavement as it was in the past. And then our septic leaching field of which that element would still remain would exist on the westerly side of the power line easement, separated from our stormwater facility, separated a little bit from the site, but would still exist generally out here. Final size and layout to be determined, of course. But the takeaway points is really the creation of the zones on the easterly portion of the site, closest to the Coonamisit River, and then the southerly portion of the property, keeping that buffer zone as strong as we possibly can on the layout. So I'll pause there, and if there's any questions I can answer, then...
Board questions. Start with you, Jerry.
Question on the five and a half acres that you're cutting out. That is essentially landlocked now, right? I mean, I don't see other driveways into that. I think that's the appropriate term.
Do the chair answer the question. Essentially a landlocked piece, yes.
Thank you.
Frank?
Well, the question that Jerry just asked was the first thing that came to my mind, so I'm glad you've answered that. You've moved the buildings to the west, and they've also been moved to the north. Is that true?
Yes.
By how much?
Forty-ish feet or so, plus minus. I just have to keep reiterating it is a loose pencil sketch, final engineering to be determined. But by, we consolidated the footprints of the building, again, separating the clubhouse. We were able to create some land to move it to the north.
How does this change the distance between the buildings and the spatial relationship of the buildings? Has that changed significantly?
They are closer within the courtyard zone, between B, C, D, and E, those are closer together.
So you've tightened everything up a little bit?
Yes.
The, the road you said is now 800 feet to the clubhouse?
Plus or minus about 800, 900 feet. Yes, sir.
All right. That's it for now. Thank you.
Mark?
For now, just the distance in the courtyard is going to be reduced to how much?
It's, it might be about 40 feet between those buildings now.
Isn't the firefighting requirement one and a half times the height?
No. So the separation of buildings dictates that, speaking not as an engineer, but a sort of landscape, excuse me, building architecture, depending on the separation of the buildings to an adjacent building dictates how the building members are constructed, what the fire ratings are, the nature of the walls, et cetera. So buildings can be closer together, you know, than one and a half times the height of the building.
Huh. That just flies in the face of what I've always been told, because if a 40-foot wall falls, it falls 40 feet. And if the firefighters are within that offset, might not be the best day for them. All right, I'll check that. That's, that's fine for now. So 40 feet. Okay, thank you. Good.
Just to, if I didn't catch it your first time around, approximately what is the distance now, plus or minus, I realize not engineering, from the southern property line to the edge of, we'll call it where the, edge of where construction is going to be or parking? Approximately how many feet is that now going to be?
About 60 feet.
60 feet? And you've gone now to, I think you said it was a, an open drainage system? What's, what is that going to, is that going to be gravel? Is that going to be exposed rock? Is that going to be a pond?
So it is, it's a stormwater detention pond, which is really just a graded area being completely covered with grass. So it would just read as a deep depressed lawn area that during and after rainfall it would fill with water and then ultimately drain out. Maybe some stabilization rock, but it wouldn't, we wouldn't want to present it as a rock quarry sort of aesthetic.
Final question I have is, at the last hearing, one of the butters who lives adjacent to the entranceway was concerned about setbacks. Has there been anything to mitigate that or change the plans?
So there have been changes to mitigate some of the effect that 371 had, and with due respect, Mr. Chair, maybe we'll defer them as I get into the presentation of the rest of the site plans, because the changes that we made into the existing site plans, I will outline what we've done to address her concerns, but those changes, those mitigations would exist under this altered plan.
Happy to come back to that.
So we can circle back to that, of course.
Scott?
Thank you. I appreciate the shift here. I think I dovetailed on two gyms. So 60 feet is the net effect of the plus or minus three acres. And I think I would just like to hear the rest of the presentation after that. So thank you.
Suzanne?
We're still maintaining that 50-foot buffer? That's not going to be touched?
More than that. So on this plan, it yields more than the 50 feet. Yes.
And snow storage, are you going to give us real plans that show, like, what?
What was the question? I'm sorry?
Are we going to have a real set of engineered plans?
No, that's one of the things that we naturally would have to discuss. As I said earlier, we are open to another hearing to discuss it and go over what we would frankly also expect to be done, have a real draft decision. We've submitted numerous substantial, very good conditions, but we'd want a decision draft to go over at one more hearing, but there's just not time to do the full engineering. It's perhaps, if anything, more risky for my client, but we would agree to the typical conditions that say that the final, more detailed plans, that essentially would be just about what the building permit package would be, would be submitted to you and if your peer review, or if you want to have your peer review or review it, that's fine, for administrative approval with, for consistency with the decision. So we would expect that the concept plan could be buttoned up a little bit by the next hearing, so that you know the details of the locations and things like that, but there just wouldn't be time. We can't take the, you know, months of doing the full engineering, because we do need to get on and conclude the hearing. And we would, you know, we have a draft condition. If you'd like to get to that tonight, or if we continue one more time, then, then we could, you know, send it to you before whatever a next hearing is that deals with that in terms of stating that the submission of more detailed engineered plans would be submitted. And then we, you know, our thought is that we would expect that, you know, the plan would be endorsed at some time period, 21 days after what time goes by and we find out about the contingency of the actual acquisition taking place. So, you know, we do think that's satisfactory.
I do appreciate the shift, but I mean, for the biggest project in town, I feel engineering plans are, I mean, called for.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask, you know, even the applauses, you know, typically there's a limit to how much applauding, if you want to allow it, but there's been a lot more than that, and we'd like to proceed totally positively tonight.
Well, you know, the thing, Mr. Counsel, is that this is something that impacts these people probably, the most impactful thing is if they're going to have their property.
And we agree.
And as I indicated the last time, you know, I don't like to tread on people's rights, on their First Amendment. So if it's disruptive and it gets out of control, I'll be happy to gavel people down, but in the meantime, I'm not going to just stop people if they won't offer a little applause that they're happy that somebody asked a pertinent question or buildings have been moved.
Okay. To put this in layperson terms, what we're putting on the table tonight is an option that came about because of the interest that was expressed to us, that if we could move the project to the west, that the, and create a strong enough piece in the rear, that the property would have value to the land trust groups, to the town, to other, you know, nonprofits that would be interested in acquiring it. So the way we're presenting this to you tonight is, we want to stay with our base plan. We want to get that approved, but out of a courtesy to the board and the town, we're saying, okay, if you want the shifted plant and you want to buy the open space, you'll have an option to do that. And you'll have, I believe, in the proposed condition, the town would have 120 days to determine if they want to do that, after our base plan is approved and recorded with the town. If at the end of the 120 days, the town decides that they do not want to do it, we would already have a project that was approved and beyond appeal. And the hope tonight was to, was to get from the board a vote of support, that you would like to go down. You would like to have a decision on the base project that hopefully is positive with reasonable conditions, but with the option that if the open space interest is really there, that you could exercise that option. And then we shift to this. And yes, it would be a new submission. It would be on an administrative basis, and that we wouldn't tie up this board. It would all have to be documented through your peer reviews, and it would go through, and it would eventually be endorsed by your staff. So if there is support for this, I don't know if you guys would do a hand vote, and we'll go down that route, but then if there is, we'll, we'll jump on it. We'll talk about an extension to accomplish that. And in the meantime, we'd like to focus on getting our base plan into the point where you can close that hearing and you can move towards deliberation and decision with reasonable conditions, we hope.
I guess, can you give us more color on any conversations you've been having about the parcel, purchase price, opportunity? How do we respond to something that we don't know anything about, I guess?
I don't know what the probability of this opportunity is for the town or for the nonprofits.
Sure. Being respectful to the people we have spoken to, and I had called Mr. Pucci, I think originally the end of last week and then Monday, so I thought it was appropriate to talk to the select board. And I didn't. I called Peter Johnson Staub, who I've known for a long time. So they, he got back to me and expressed really what I said at the outset. They feel that it, they'd rather stick with the zoning board to deal with this. They didn't say yes, they didn't say no. They also said that the way, the process, which I don't think is a legally required process, but just protocol, which we respect, that the way they like to deal with it in the town is for the select board ultimately to contact some, in this case, land conservation group, and they didn't want to discuss specifics. So, you know, I feel a little hamstrung quite candidly, but they didn't want us to discuss specifics or entities, but that if they, and of course, taking a lead from you, if you're not interested, then that would be the end of it. But I assume and hope that if you are interested, that the select board then would be motivated to reach out to some conservation group to carry on a discussion and to negotiate. And the reason that I mentioned and we put in, if we get to a draft condition, be it tonight or at another hearing, you know, I put in that it's for consideration at fair market value. So, you know, there's, we have an idea of that, but we don't think it's necessary, appropriate to, you know, to quote a price, because that would... Well, listen, I may have a quiet voice...
Again, there's no amplification tonight, and I'm sorry...
I'm doing, I'm doing the best I can, but don't blame me. I don't want to, you know, I feel...
Ladies and gentlemen, again, we don't have amplification this evening. It was not an intentional act, believe me. I would rather that everyone here can hear exactly what is being said. I would invite anyone who is having difficulty hearing to please come forward. We're doing the best we can this evening with what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, you know, I apologize, but I'm not doing it intentionally. It's just difficult to shout this way and try to talk respectfully, which I'm trying to do to the board. So it's a very good question, and that's all I can say, because that's really what was requested of me, that we leave it at that. And I understand that it makes sense to get into it, not the price per se, but to, you know, see what groups might be interested in all of that, but that would have to be a next step. That's just the way I was told to treat it, and I have to respect that.
How long have these, how long have these talks been going on?
I'm sorry?
How long have these talks been going on?
Oh, we, we had said, without naming the group again, but we had said that over the last month or so, David had conversation, and I recall, I think you can correct me, that there was a general discussion way back before even the filing of the application, that there was discussion with the town that something like this might be possible. No specifics, certainly no site plan shifting anything, but that was just basically a, an opening of the, of our possible ability to do that if there was a response. So there's not been ongoing negotiations.
Tony?
Although I very much appreciate you shifting this forward as you have, I mean, this is the first time, I'm just speaking for myself, this is the first time I'm seeing this. It's a plan that's not been engineered, and I just want to make sure I understand what you're asking this board to do tonight. I think I heard, because it is difficult to hear you, I think I heard you say that you want this board to approve this plan or the concept of this plan without understanding exactly where everything is going to be, the concept of the plan, not knowing everything is going to be, and then, when the final plan is completed, have it administratively approved when our zoning administrator receives it?
Yeah, yes, but again, that's really not that different.
Well, let me just...
Really not that different from what happens from the stage of an approved plan, which under 40B is more general, although our plans have been very specific. But I'm not disagreeing that you would want a little more detail. That's why I said that if there's positive feedback from you folks, we would agree to one more hearing, and there would be more detail with locations. It's just that it wouldn't be fully engineered yet in terms of the drainage and everything else.
I respectfully, I very much appreciate this new concept, but it's not engineered. I haven't got a... I haven't got a clue, let me just finish. I don't have a clue what I'm really looking at spatially. I have an idea, maybe, but really don't know. Speaking as one member, I'm not 100% happy with having this administratively approved because I don't know what's going to come in with engineered plans. So let me ask this. Precisely what are you asking this board to do tonight? Precisely because we, you can't deal, we can't deal with the five and a half plus and minus acres, we can't deal with that ourselves. What if you can't get someone to buy that? So what do you want us to do tonight?
It, it is not us that will be getting someone to buy it. What we're simply doing is we're simply extending an option that if the town would prefer this plan, and if the town decides that they have the resources, if they have CPC money, if they have a land trust that wants to step up, whatever they, the mechanism which they have, we're simply giving them the opportunity, because this normally would take place in workshops. That's what would normally happen. We weren't able to do that because of the board's desire to keep everything in this We've spent a lot of time working on this plan. My heart was in the original plan. That's where I wanted it to be. We got a lot of feedback from the neighbors, a lot of feedback from this board to create stronger buffers, take out your garages, do this thing. So we went, and we completely redesigned, and that's what's before you right now. We would like to see that plan approved. We would like, if, if you want, you don't have to do it, and you can say no, forget it, guys, just keep going with what you have. But we were looking at this as an option, that literally there would be a condition that would be written with an exhibit, with a conceptual layout of the buildings, conceptual land that would be going to conservation or the town, and that, if the board, at that point, I guess it would be the Board of Selectment, if they elected to exercise the option, then we would go to Plan B. It would come forward with the same details and designs that Phil had done. It would include most likely affidavits from the professionals, that all the previous standards are met, and then it would be administratively reviewed. Whether that involves an outside peer consultant or not would be the board's choice, but you could do that. And so it would be a technical review at that point. It wouldn't be a public hearing, there wouldn't be more votes. It would be, okay, everything's correct. Literally what we're trying to do is take the plan and slide it to the west, which Mr. Fineran has beaten the crap out of me on every single time I've been here. So...
Let me just follow up, if you don't mind. Again, the most complex project in this town in the last, what, over 350 years. I very much, Mr. Gallo, I think this is a great, I, speaking as one member, I think that's a great option moving it forward. But the contingency side of this, what happens with that five and a half plus and minus land when we don't know, we don't know what the Board of Selectment, the select board, will do? And then you end up with a piece of landlocked land, it appears to be. Is it contingent upon you selling that piece of land, that five and a half plus and minus acres, for you moving it forward? Or what happens if it doesn't sell? What if it just sits there? What happens then?
It, it wouldn't just sit there because the proposal, and very, very candidly, and David was very forthright in just explaining it, I didn't get into it, just thought we'd do it later if there's positive feedback. The difficult thing for you, I readily acknowledge, would be that what we would need is kind of, not kind of, that would be a contingency that if it is purchased probably by some nonprofit, just because municipal purchases are more difficult and time consuming, but if it is purchased, then the plan, that is this new plan, would be the plan that would be approved, it would have been approved tonight, would be finalized. The difficult thing is we're saying that we do need, and I, you know, reality is, we should have one more hearing, one way or the other. We are asking that the plans with all of the updates that we've already done, which in themselves are responsive, and as I stated earlier tonight, acknowledging and understanding that all the peer review that you have requested is completed and positively all satisfactory, that we would ask that the plan that is not this plan, but the changes up to this point, be approved, but with that, call it an option, for the plan to switch to this. If, and again, I feel hamstrung, but if the select board and whoever, whichever nonprofits they want to work with follow up and want to purchase it, that would clinch the deal in terms of being able to do this plan.
Mr. Chairman, one last, one last. There's an awful lot of contingencies here. Again, I appreciate you moving this forward. It sounds to me like unless somebody buys that, then this deal is off.
Correct, correct.
There is, I, no business person, except for you folks, would make a deal like that, all right? And there are a couple of business people on this board, but no business person would make a deal like that, and I would agree with you, I'm only speaking for one board member, would make a deal like that with a contingency not having any idea what the other board or whoever would do with this, would purchase that. There is no, you'd, you'd have to come back to us with, the negotiation's done, and a new engineering plan. If you're saying no, then we have to have some input from our counsel as to what we can and can't do.
Respectfully, we were told that can't be done. We were told that we cannot negotiate with the Board of Selectment. We cannot negotiate, well, we could independently...
You were told you couldn't negotiate with the committee, whose name cannot be mentioned during this hearing.
Who told us that?
You were told you cannot negotiate directly with the committee, it has to go to the select board first, and then, once the select board approves it, and I'm not 100% sure of this because there's so much confusion going on, that the select board then have to recommend it to that entity that buys land in this town.
That, that is correct, that is what...
This is the most, no, there's too many open ends for you, as far as I'm concerned.
But it's not, it's not, it, I don't think it's that confusing, it is...
It's not confusing, I know exactly what you're doing.
Right, no, we're not doing, we're not doing it. As I said, that's not the thing that we're creating. I understand that, that it would be better, and we would much prefer if we were already actively talking and had some better idea.
Well, once you get your ducks lined up in a row, why don't you extend and then come back to us, so that we understand what you're doing?
Well, what... With all due respect, our ducks are in a row. We have a plan that's fully been vetted by the town. We would like to have that hearing closed, we would like to have reasonable conditions, and hopefully an approval. What we're doing is we listen to the board, we listen to the people that reached out to us, and we're putting an option out there. And the option is strictly something that the Board of Selectment can decide if they want to exercise. I mean, for all we know, you know, you guys could decide to just say no to our project. And if you do that, there's nothing really for the Board of Selectment to discuss because it's off to the HAC, and you're still no closer to achieving affordable housing. What we're doing is, we reached out because early on in the process, different groups called us and said, you have extra land, can we buy it? What are you going to do with it? And we said, point blank, we're holding it, because we want to get through this process, we want to have our plan fully vetted, and we want to make sure we have the ability and the flexibility to do what we want. This move, this change is expensive. It's very expensive for us, and it's going, it would only be done if the town, and I'm using that in a broad sense, decided that they wanted to acquire the open space and the option. That process is normally handled by, as far as the dollar values, it's done through an appraisal. The parties get appraisals, they negotiate a sale. The land and the, and what we want to do, it's strictly an option. Our goal is to get through this process. A lot of people reached out to us on this, so we said, we owe it to the board to at least explore it. So that's when we made the calls. We were surprised that we couldn't discuss this more freely with the Board of Selectment, but I believe the Board of Selectment was just trying to respect the ZBA and saying, let that process finish, and then we can step in if they choose to step in. But that's why we're here. And this would strictly be an option, strictly be a condition that's in our permit. If you don't exercise the rights on the option within 120 days, we go forward with that basic point.
Just one other thing to state what is or should be obvious from the plan, but this alternative plan also does have the big benefit of speaking solidly to your concern about the front westerly portion still being a separate developable parcel. It would become part of this project, and it would no longer be a separately developable parcel. So I just thought it was important to mention that.
Mr. Chair?
I understand what you said about having a third party do an assessment of what the potential purchase price is. You've been thinking about the parcel for 30 days. Is this a million dollars? Is it $10 million? You have to give somebody some sense of what it would cost to transact this.
I can tell you, it's about 1.4 million. And if you, and if that's based on a discounted value to what the Form A lots that we would lose, it's a discounted value based on land that's for sale in the neighborhood, it's a discounted value from what typically the land trusts pay for conservation land.
Markfield question, that's Jerry.
So what's the purchase price for the full 30 acres?
It's a public record. It's in our project eligibility letter.
Yeah, what's the number?
I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head, it's not relevant.
Yeah, it's fairly relevant.
1.8.
1.8. So you're, you're paying 1.8 for a piece of property, and then you're going to turn around and sell us roughly one-sixth of it for pretty much what you paid for the whole thing?
Mr. Chairman, you can take any view you want, but that's not the appropriate way to look at it, in our opinion.
That's simple arithmetic.
And it is irrelevant because the finance is approved by, by mass housing, and it's a separate matter, okay? So, you know, the, the point is, the question understood, legitimate question, is it a million or is it 10 million? And it's nowhere near 10 million. And don't forget, you know, the va, the value in a purchase and sale, and I personally didn't even know what it is, is also based on all of the risks that the developer takes. You know, it's unpermitted, and there's risk, and all of the many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, of development expenses without the applicant even knowing if it will be able to go forward. So that's one of the reasons, it is apples and oranges.
Well, sorry, I'm, I'm just doing simple math. In your scenario here, that really doesn't jive with that statement because you're basically making your money back on one-sixth of the property, so you've got another five-sixths of it to go, so, I mean, and at five mil... Let me finish, please.
Oh, I thought you were...
Let me finish, please. So you've got five more $5 million pieces of pro, or 1.5 million dollars pieces of property, according to your math? And I, and you are claiming to make this better, which admittedly it is slightly, it could be a lot better, but again, I mean, you're paying less than $8,000 per unit in land cost, and you could easily do this and, and keep the land yourself as open space and, and manipulate it so we have wider buffers on north and south. I, I just have to look at this thing historically, and we've been here for six months, and I'm sorry, I mean, this looks like you're putting lipstick on the pig the day before the prom.
I'm not going to respond to analogies like that. Not appropriate, not necessary.
procedural question, and Mr. Pucci, please chime in. We approved this, the Plan B, the town, oh, we can't get anybody to buy this extra land. Then you're saying you want to go back to the original plan, wouldn't that be a substantial change?
No. What, what we would be doing is we would get our current plan approved.
Without this, then?
Without, without this...
Plan A.
Plan A would get approved, in that permit would be a condition which would give the town the opportunity to exercise Plan B. If they decide they don't want to do it, or they can't do it, we have our base plan, and we can go ahead and go forward.
I'd like to ask Mr. Pucci, is that, if we did go that way, is that a reasonable type condition?
I wouldn't recommend doing it that way. I, I do think it's a, I think it's a good faith, you know, proposal that the developer made. I think it definitely requires, you know, everybody to look into it a little more. I think it would benefit if, you know, whatever negotiations may or may not be underway, if they can see what they can accomplish on, on the proposed, you know, conservation area, and have another hearing on it. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend doing it exactly the way it's proposed. You're going to have to end up, you know, acting on whatever plan is before you. So, you know, I, I would recommend looking into this plan more, extending the public hearing if the applicant is willing to do it, and then considering, I would imagine a lot of the conditions that are proposed would apply both to the prior plan and to this new plan. And then if the applicant insists on closing the hearing the next time, see about, you know, issuing a decision based on the information you have at that time. I mean, there's evidence in the record for sure that, you know, in my opinion, you can condition this project by ordering, you know, either through denial of certain waivers or conditions for maintenance of more of a, of a natural area, including this area to the east, you know, the five and a half acres depicted on the plan. So I think you, you have options within your jurisdiction to condition a project appropriately based on the old plan that's before you. I think it would be a more useful effort if more detail could be, you know, determined on this revised plan, and see if that could be properly conditioned or considered. But I, I wouldn't recommend, if we're in the same place at the time of the continued hearing, I wouldn't recommend, you know, approving the prior plan and then having a contingency on this plan. That would be not something I would recommend doing.
Frank, you got a question?
Yes. I'd like to talk briefly about the subdivision aspects of this. On the subdivision plan that is before us that you had previously submitted, you're going to make the roadway a town road, or build it to subdivision stand... No, it's not a town road, but built to subdivision standards, I understand there's a difference there. Are you proposing any change in the roadway now?
Again, that's, all the questions are good. I appreciate the questions, and sincerely. Actually, what we think we could do, or we could do, but we would discuss it with you, is it wouldn't have to be a subdivision road because it would, all the land would be one project. So it could be, obviously would still have to be safe and adequate width and all those things, but in addition to being shorter, it would go straight to the project, and it wouldn't have to be considered a road or a subdivision road at all. We'd still build it to, I don't know if it would be all the subdivision road standards, but it would certainly have to be built safely. But that actually would remove a whole bunch of waivers that wouldn't be needed for this roadway, which would no longer be a subdivision road.
Well, so you withdraw, would this entail withdrawing your application for subdivision approval?
No, 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 because we, we have, I, I respect what Mr. Pucci just said, too. I know my proposal... I know my proposal, our proposal, in terms of a condition, you know, you need to think about it, and I respect what George said. Maybe there'd be some other suitable condition that we also agree would work, but we are not withdrawing anything. We are reserving all our rights. Hopefully, we can find a way to deal with it successfully so that both sides are happy. But no, we're not withdrawing anything now.
Well, the original plan, which is on record right now, the roadway was... Looks like it was going to provide access to the gravel pit. This one does not. Are you taking that out of the picture altogether?
I don't think... No, I don't think we are.
Well, you're not going to have any access to it.
Pitch, pine lane.
Is that... What is that? You're not going to have any access to it through this parcel? And we understand you're still honored or have the rights to acquire it.
I think just to clarify, the gravel pit has legal frontage.
All right.
It has access on other town roads.
All right. But what I was...
It is not dependent on Plan A nor Plan B.
Okay, I understand that, but basically, you're saying that whatever happens on a gravel pit is going to be totally separate from what's going on here.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Just a curiosity factor, if you have a piece of parcel, a piece of land at the easterly end that's, you know, 5 and 1/2 acres, and you want to sell it to the town or to a nonprofit, but it's not a lot, how are you going to affect the conveyance?
Well, several ways. It could even be done by meets and bounds, but if it progresses and we get a plan approved, it could be divided off. The zoning board could grant whatever waivers are needed to, you know, just make it a separate parcel. Parcel. Obviously, if the plan goes forward, it would say a non-buildable parcel.
Would that be one of your requests if we go forward with this?
I can't say that I thought of that, but I think it's a good question, and I don't see any problem with that. Because you're right, obviously, the intent is for it to be conveyed.
Just for clarification purposes, and I'm going to go to Mr. Fineran's favorite sport, hockey. You'll notice what we have drawn there is kind of like a hockey stick. And the reason for that was the request was that to create as bigger area as you could to the east, towards the Coonamessit side, but provide the handle portion of the stick, not the blade, comes up along the side of the property to allow connectivity. And then when it stopped up at the corner, what we would do is we would provide an easement to allow people to get over to the sidewalk and go out to Sandwood Road. Because part of the value in the interest from open space groups is the possibility of creating connectivity, the possibility of it being used both for, you know, passive recreation, for people to walk, that type of thing. So that's why the piece is there. It wouldn't be... Five acres would be a separate piece, and the piece running up along the southern border would be separate. It would all be one piece that would be conveyed to a land trust slash the town.
All right. So basically, we're presented with the opportunity to have a preferred project if we're willing to pay for it. That's what it comes down to.
That's correct. It's reasonable.
All right.
What's the reasonable likelihood that you would be able to have some type of enforceable agreement as it pertains to these 5 and 1/2 acres by the time we have extended hearing?
Mr. Chair, it's eight acres. If the Board of Selectmen do the request of you in the board, that's the only way they're going to get involved, because they made it very clear that they were not going to get into it until they were... We concluded here, or they... I guess they were brought into it. We went through the profit channels. We went to Mr. Pucci. We went to the assistant town manager. He went to the town manager, and then he went to the chair, Nancy Taylor, and that's the way they worked the process.
Was there any interest from nonprofit conservation groups?
There is.
That's the question. Is there any likelihood that you would have or could have a contingent agreement with them concerning this land?
Yes, possibly. If they agree, and I don't know if it would really take the select board to ask them to do so, but if they want to talk to us, you know, again, ages ago, there was expression of interest. So we would love for that to happen.
Jerry.
My concern is that I don't think we have enough time to go from here to the select board and back. I mean, you have to get on the agenda. They may have additional questions. So if this has to go through...
Keep your voice up a little, Jerry.
If this has to go through the select board, I think it's almost impossible to include quickly.
I think that lady wants to be heard on this specific issue.
They can't hear Peter.
I don't know if you came in late, but the microphones aren't working. This is just working to pick up sound for the local TV channel?
That may be the case, but all we can do is try, and it would just be...
But would you give us the extent... I'm sorry. Would you give us the extension?
Yeah, right. Only assumption...
There could be two or three weeks.
Right, understood. But if there's an extension, I think it is possible.
Sorry.
Follow-up questions? Noreen.
If you were able to find someone to buy that back parcel, for example, how would they access that?
First of all, we would not be finding...
You have to talk over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We would not be finding the buyer. It would be... The town is the buyer that we're reaching out to.
No, the town would probably not be the buyer. They, for whatever reason, we've been informed that in this town, the select board must initiate the process with a nonprofit.
Right, but how would it... Whoever purchased the property, how would they access that piece?
They would access it... They would... It would be a walking access. They would walk in our sidewalk. They would turn to the south along that western property line. And then they would come down all the way along that southern piece, the three acres that's labeled there, and that would bring them back to the piece. But they would be... It's a whole piece. The intent is for... That they would most likely hold this as conservation slash passive recreation. That's what it would be bought for.
And so that's to include that lower, which I'm assuming is the southern approximate three-acre strip that was to be a setback area that you want to include as part of the sale?
Yes. It would be... They would be buying... It would be buying all of that. All of that.
So doesn't it seem peculiar, though, that you would want another group to buy the buffer as opposed to that being part of your parcel, that you would leave in a natural state as a buffer to the butters as opposed to selling it to another party?
The part going across our property could probably just as easily be by way of a restrictive covenant, a conservation easement.
And now with the northern part, what would be the setback from the lot line to, you know, like clearing?
Here?
Yes.
This area up here, I believe the... 20 feet. From the edge of the park... From the edge of the parking lot to the property line is about 20 feet.
That would be... So only 20 feet would remain natural.
So it would be about 20 feet by sketch plan. There's not much growth up there, right adjacent to the gravity... To the sand pit. So while, yes, it could remain natural, there's not much growth in there that you would envision it to be the natural buffer that you're getting on the south and the east lands.
Mr. Chairman.
Frank.
Where is the wastewater treatment plant on this new plant?
The field... Sorry. The field is still here. The tanks and the treatment are not depicted here, but still would generally be at the front of the site.
On which side of the electric easement?
On the front side of the electric easement, the Sandwich Road side of the...
So they'd be closer to the properties on Sandwich Road?
Yeah, closer to... Sandwich Road is here. The treatment field, the tanks, those would somewhere be in here. So because it's on the Sandwich Road side of the easement, yes, technically close to the homes on Sandwich Road.
All right. Thank you.
Mark.
The new proposed road, and this would be for the engineer. As I recall, you didn't meet in the last plan five of the six standards that engineering wanted. What kind of an improvement is this going to have on that? Or you'll still be asking for all the same waivers?
So the simplest improvement is that under this plan, that road is no longer a subdivision road. It is no longer covered by the subdivision road standards, and this would be termed a driveway, as your engineer had also suggested we do. To get a little more granular, the waivers that we were asking for under the subdivision on what we're all calling Plan A, with some of the geometry of the center line, there's a radius, there was a reverse tangent.
See, that's gone, yeah.
A couple of those things, the length of the road. So the reverse tangent is gone. The curvature is largely gone. The length of the road, the driveway, is shorter, would still exceed 500 feet if it were a subdivision roadway, but it would no longer be a subdivision roadway. It would simply be a driveway access to the easterly.
Okay. And a question for you two fellows.
Yes.
Initially, when this was proposed, you said that in all likelihood, or the chances were at least 50%, I don't recall exactly, that you would sell this off to some investment firm or insurance company or whatever. I know there's an article in the, I believe it's the Portland Post-Gazette, referring to a property you have in Portland, Maine that's permitted for 250 units, and you've extended the permit a couple of times.
Not to cut you off, sir.
And now it is... I'm speaking. And now it's become known that you were putting that property up for sale with the permits. This kind of rapid turnabout and your attitude after six months makes me suspicious that that's probably the same plan you have here. Is there... Am I...
Mr. Fineran and board members, Dave informs me, I don't know myself, Saxon does not own land in Maine, so I don't know what that's...
They do.
I'm not in Portland, okay. But number one. Number two, it's completely irrelevant. It is simply irrelevant. It doesn't matter. They have a right to get a permit. They have a right to sell it if they want to in the future. It just simply doesn't matter. We have our project eligibility letter. The next stage is getting a permit based on all of the land use issues, what might happen in a future sale. Doesn't matter, so we're not going to respond further. Thank you.
And then I just have to say, sort of in that same vein, I mean, for the price of 80% of your purchase price, you're allowing us the option to basically eliminate us from ourselves, for the board to eliminate itself from the negotiations, as it seems to me. I'd be adverse to that because it's my job to watch every move, weigh every option. And personally, I don't particularly like that concept.
I don't think an answer is called for, but I don't believe your characterization is correct.
Looking at... Do you have a question, Suzanne?
I do. Mr. Calhoun, you stated that this pencil sketch that we have is far more expensive for you to proceed with. Tell me why.
We have a plan that right now is already complete. We would also be losing or selling off a substantial amount of land.
So you're making money on that part. But what about the far more expensive on this pencil sketch?
I don't understand your question.
You just stated a little while ago, "This pencil sketch is far more expensive for me to do. I'm only helping you, you know, get the nonprofit people what they want or whatever." You said this plan is far more expensive. I wrote it right down when you said it.
Because just to get... If the town elects to buy the open space, and they elect to go the option, Option B, we now have to design a new project. We have to take the information we have. We have a lot of the work in the can, as they say. But it's going to be expensive to do that, but we're willing to undertake it.
I think the simple answer is it's engineering and related soft cost. It's not that it would cost more to construct.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Chairman.
And this is... We'll call this plan here Option B. If it's passive recreation, the people would have to drive up and park on the street. How are we going to get people to use this? There's no public access for them to drive their cars down. They have to drive to the entrance, park their cars, and then walk down.
Those are good questions. You know, it's... I don't have a pat answer.
Okay.
I mean, another thing, and it just pops in my mind, and, you know, I'll probably be hooted, but that's okay. You know, these days, a lot of people ride bikes all over the place.
Fair enough.
And there are people who could also walk. But yeah, it's true, there wouldn't be really parking to speak of.
And a follow-up question. Before, and I don't know if you took it out or it's in, or whether the board wants it in, you proposed putting a sewer in so the town, if they wanted to in the future, could use that to sewer other town parcels. Is this... You still have the sewer in Plan B here?
We would. We would, but at the last meeting, and we sent a letter to the board, Mr. Fineran didn't approve of... Didn't like those because he thought we were just going to go off and use it to tie in another development, but obviously...
With all due respects, he doesn't speak for the board.
Okay.
Is sewer in or out?
The answer is yes.
We intend to keep them on the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you ask us to remove them.
Fair enough.
Actually, to correct that.
I spoke with the DPW. Those two sewer stubs were part of the original negotiation where you were supposed to potentially offset what you contribute to the Coonamessit River by removing the septicage from approximately 140 homes in that neighborhood. That's part of negotiations that you originally had with the DPW, so that would make your last statement completely incorrect.
Look, any past discussions were just that, discussions, number one. Number two, there's nothing here to discuss. You can't bring in statements and use that as the basis for a decision, and it still is irrelevant. Things have evolved. If you think that something hasn't been consistent, so be it. That's your prerogative. But the point of we have something very concrete, there was a very specific question, and the answer is yes. Those sewer laterals would still stay. That's all that's relevant.
Regarding the other proposed agenda items, then, I just want to be clear. Are these... These are all going to be applicable to the original plan, not the red line plan up on the screen?
That's correct, but as I think we've said several times, probably most of them would still apply to, other than some reduced waivers, but the proposed conditions, the responses that, if you'd like us to get into it, which we would like to, Phil can walk you through without reading everything.
So I'm going to just ask for the board what the appetite is to see if there is a potential buyer for this, the eight acres, or do we want to proceed as if that's just not going to happen? I'd like a little discussion on that before we continue on to the agenda.
It's five acres.
I do have one...
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
One pertinent comment on the three-acre part. As they presented it to us, it would be a walking path to access the five acres. That's supposed to be an undisturbed buffer. If you use that for a walking path, it'll then become a mountain biking path. It'll then become whatever, who knows? And there goes, out the window, the undisturbed buffer.
Whether it's a walking path, we're not saying it's a walking path, it would be going to a land trust, and that land trust would be able to put the restrictions that they want to preserve, the natural buffer.
And it doesn't have to be passive recreation. You know, this plan, this could be just... And it doesn't have to be passive recreation, you know, this plan, it could be just be conservation land.
So, the question I'm going to redirect to the board right now, is I want a discussion on whether or not we want to ask for a continuance to explore the possibility of this option, or to proceed with the original plan, which has buildings on the south, pushed up on the southeast corner. Frank?
This plan was the one that the selectmen asked for very early on, when you presented the prime conceptually, and when they sent their comments up to Mass Housing, they made the comment that they would like to see the project designed this way. So, I do appreciate the fact that you've come forward by moving the plan, moving the project to the west, and leaving some space at the east. One of the things that always concerned me about this plan is that I thought there was an opportunity to come up with a very good project here, but it was really constrained by the fact that you weren't willing to use all of the available land. Now you appear to. But what this really comes down to is that you are offering a better plan, a better project, at least, I think it is, if the town is willing to pay for it. I think it's an option that we ought to explore, but I'm not saying it's going to fly, but it ought to be explored, because there's a lot of contingencies in this plan, as Mr. Petrucci has mentioned, that have to align before this can work. And I personally think that it's an option that we should at least explore for the benefit of the town and the people in the neighborhood, because if there's a project out here eventually, it should be the best one we could get.
Mr. Calhoun?
If possible, could the board take a vote or a motion to authorize the chair to talk to the board of selectmen and the town manager to open up the discussions with the land trust type groups? I think that's all they were looking for. They just do not want to talk to a private developer without the town being fully involved, and their relationship runs through the board of selectmen on land acquisitions. So, maybe it could be Mr. Morse, Mr. Pucci have to talk to town management.
We'll make sure procedurally, we have the right to do that, but let's finish up with our discussion right now, as to what the board's appetite is. Jerry, do you want to lay in?
I sort of like this Plan B, but haven't heard, and I don't know from the neighbors, you know, which plan they prefer, not that it's going to overwhelmingly change anything, but it'd be interesting to get input from them, even if we extended another week, and if we extended another week, be an opportunity for the neighbors to express concern.
It's going to be a lot more than a week.
Okay, well.
Mark?
I'd just like to add, or suggest, that, I mean, this is going to be the last, or potentially the second to the last hearing, and there'll be no further testimony. I think it would be valuable to the applicant and the public to hear from the ZVA members about the possible conditions that we might be imposing on this location, and I'm prepared to start off. I have a list of several, because regardless of where you shift this, I want to finish first, though.
I don't want to get any conditions right now.
Regardless of where you shift this project, it still has all the impacts of the other one, which, accepting the land implies that we accept the project, and in my case, that's certainly not the case, and I think the two certainly are piggyback to one another, if you like. I mean, it's kind of a...
What is your feeling right now on requesting a continuance for the purpose of exploring whether or not there's appetite to purchase these eight acres?
Well, I'm not adverse to that, but I still have numerous objections to the project itself, and, I mean, accepting this, by no means, in my mind, puts us down the road to...
Public comment will be later, don't want you to keep your hand up all night.
Accepting this project without some hard and stringent conditions, and I think it's as good a time as any for them to come out, or for us to at least let the public know what we're thinking beyond this 11th-hour proposal.
Scott?
I like the new proposal, I think that, unfortunately, I'm not sure that the applicant's going to like it, but I think you'd almost need a 60-day extension, so that we could potentially vet out the opportunity with the select board, or whoever the governing body is that's going to have these negotiations, to see if it's even viable. If it's not viable, we're all spinning our wheels, so I'm for an extension, but I think you're going to need a certain period of time to see the validity of whether there's some sort of a purchaser out there. And Mr. Finneran brought up a good point, you know, we're looking at this additional three acres and saying, okay, now it's an eight-acre parcel for the 1.4 million, but I'm not sure the butters are going to like to have a bunch of people walking right, in theory, down their backyard again. So, we're trying to give them more space, to give them more flexibility and more privacy, and then we're saying, hey, good news is, now there's a parcel available, but there's going to be a walkway down there. So, I'm not, I'm kind of not sold on that attachment, and one of the other board members mentioned, where's people going to park to access this? So, there's a lot that has to kind of take place for this to become viable, so I think we're going to need a fairly substantial extension.
Suzanne?
I agree with Scott, I'm going to need engineering plans. I mean, this is like fourth grade, and I would like to have real plans with real information on them.
Tony?
I agree with Mr. Finneran, I agree with Mr. Peterson. I think that this board should ask for at least a 60-day extension to consider everything put forth today, which is the 11th hour. We certainly don't have the detail, we don't understand how people will get access to this land, we don't manage the select board. In fact, we're all appointed by the select board, so we don't manage them, but we need a lot more information. I'd like to see this extended, so that we can consider that, and we can ask for more information as we need it.
So, Jim, that extra time, too, would give you the chance to kind of coordinate what proposed conditions on the other plan would apply to this one.
Right.
I mean, you didn't ask me a question, but I would urge a 60-day continuance, it's the only thing really viable for all the moving parts of it, and even if the applicant did the math, worst-case scenario, 60 days, oh, 40 days to issue a decision, it's really not putting them into a, you know, a time crunch, I would presume. And so, I just wanted to weigh in, I know the various pieces that would be required, you know, for you to really make an informed decision, and you really need that 60 days, in my opinion, but, just wanted to weigh in on that.
So, I share the same sentiments as Mr. Duffy regarding location, I think this shows that this parcel can be developed, I think, in a more appropriate way than I think Plan, was referred tonight as Plan A. I would also like to see a little bit more information, and I think this would be easier to get to a conditionable project with Plan B at this point, but there's a lot of unanswered questions and more information that's needed. I didn't want to get in tonight, but I share with Mr. Finneran, I think that making sure that we have enough time, thank you, Mr. Pucci, to make sure that our proposed conditions, either from the applicant or the board, can be well coordinated. So, I guess at this point, I will ask the developer if we could have a 60-day continuation for the purposes of negotiations regarding these eight acres.
I think what we'd like to do... Come up to the mic. What we'd like to do is work from a more closer timeline. What we'd like to talk about is an extension of maybe two weeks, we stay focused on the base plan, and that will give the town the ability to talk and determine whether or not they really have the resources, or they even want to pursue it. The board of selectmen may hear this and may say, you know what, we don't want to spend the money. As far as your questions about people being able to walk through the woods, if it's conservation land, I believe all the, you know, it wouldn't be a matter where somebody is building the path down it or anything. I think they would be looking more to hold it as open space. But what I would prefer to do is work from a two-week extension, see where we are, go through our conditions, go through our waivers on the base project, and if in two weeks you find out that you've got some traction from the board of selectmen, that we should go down that road, at that point, we'd stop and talk about that, how much time we need to really do it. We would have pushed this harder, but at the point at which people reached out to us, we never thought that it would run into a quick roadblock, that they couldn't talk about it, because they had to engage the board of selectmen. So, that's the only reason. It came to us last minute, we had heard early on, people had just reached out to us, but what I'd like to work from is a two-week extension on the base plan, to get to conditions, to get closer, get through the waivers, and if you've made traction on your side of it, we can talk about an extension at that point. But to carte blanche, just say we're going to put this on ice for 60 days, everybody will have to be re-read into this, we're going to be into the middle of the summer, people will be on vacations, so I'd like to stay on a tighter schedule, and a two-week extension, and then we stop and see where we're at.
Noreen, what does our scheduling look like here?
Two, 40 Bs in two weeks. Yes, so, the next date you would have, the next earliest date you'd have available would be May 30th, because you already have pre-booked meetings for every other week.
And they're going to be able to give us all the information.
But I think the other problem with that timeline is, you know, your peer's not going to be able to make any comments, because there's no plans for them to comment on.
So, let me ask the question, then, if there is an, are you prepared to give the board additional time if we come back and say there is now political appetite to perhaps purchase these, or?
Sure. I mean, we're looking, as Mr. Pucci said previously, we're looking for some give-and-take, and we're putting something out there.
Mr. Chairman?
Tony?
Do we even know how we would manage this in two weeks?
No, I mean, two weeks is just, I don't think it's realistic. I mean, you have to get on the selectmen's agenda, they're going to have to consider it. I just don't think we, the board, would be able to come back with a, whether there's being sufficient interest or not within a two-week period of time.
Selectmen would probably want to have the meeting in this room.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's a big project, really.
Counsel?
Given what Dave said, that, you know, if there is positive that we would extend it yet further, but given the schedule, so May 30th would be okay, so that's three weeks, and it does give more time to try to get some feedback on, from everybody, you folks, if you inquire, which we hope you will, of the select board, and, you know, us working on things, so we definitely would do that.
Are we going to get something other than fourth grade?
Ask the question. One second.
Are we going to get something other than this?
We will develop this plan a little bit further, but we're not going to go and develop a full-blown submission again.
Isn't this the give-and-take here?
Don't answer it. Don't answer it.
There is give-and-take, but it is not at all different than any project where there is, yes, a significant change, but when it's something that actually is essentially what's been requested, yes, we agree, I said at the outset, you'll have some more detail, but it is totally consistent with what's done on many projects, that the final engineer plans will still be peer-reviewed, and reviewed by the board, and your town departments, whoever you want, to make sure they meet with what you intended, and the conditions and all of that. So, it's not really compromising you. Again, we're not, in no way asking you to vote on this plan tonight, three weeks would give us time to develop those additional details, which would give you dimensions and things like that, it would not be fully engineered with drainage plans and things like that, but you would have plenty of detail, so that it could be reviewed later for consistency with the decision.
Reviewed by us later?
Yes, by, yes, part of a condition, yes, absolutely.
Jerry, did you have a question?
I guess my suggestion would be, grant the extension, but let's go through some of these waiver requests, because they may be very applicable to Plan A or B.
Correct.
And I think, you know, if we get an agreement on the 30th...
No, we don't have a peer engineer. We have no peer.
I think we have to vote that, right? The extension.
Do you want to weigh in, George?
On what?
With our proposed, our proposed plan of action, continuing for three weeks?
Yeah, I don't love it, but you would have to vote to accept it, and then it would be filed in the town clerk's office, written extension from the applicant, and you'd recommence on the 30th, see what you can accomplish in the meantime, but, you know, you've got to remember, you know, I've been through everything now in detail, there are, the applicant was, the engineering firm was very responsive to the peer review comments that went along, but there are some key issues that come down to whether certain key waivers should be granted, and then what your authority would be in terms of either denying the project, because not enough of the parcel is being presented with the building footprint, or conditioning it appropriately, and denying certain waivers that make the applicant maintain a natural area. So, there are, in other words, when you're saying Plan A or Plan B, you're not locked into approving Plan A, so you have options on that. You can deny it, based on the evidence that is before you, or you can condition it, based on the evidence before you, and you can also deny or grant waivers on that project. So, you're not locked in one or the other. I think, again, this is obviously a good faith step, an offer from the applicant, you know, on an alternative plan, it would benefit from more time to look into it, to see what exactly you're looking at. If they can't get anybody to buy those pieces, or the, you know, the full eight acres, that doesn't bind you at all, you're still acting on this application, and you have evidence that was presented to you, that the way that project was initially laid out, it's not using the land properly, and you're going to have to, you know, deliberate on that and make a decision on it. So, you know, that would be my recommendation, if you want to accept the extension, get a vote on it, move to that date certain, but, you know, I would suggest that the parties work hard in the meantime to get some further detail together, so that you can act on something on May 30. And if you direct me to do a draft decision, but I don't think you're at that point yet. I know the applicant wanted, you know, a draft decision, so that they'd be able to comment in the public hearing process. You're not in the position yet to do that, you know, I haven't heard from the board members how they want to act on this application, so, you know, I'd recommend that as much information, you know, can be achieved as possible by the 30th, then see where you're at. If they want to close the hearing at that point, it'll have to be closed, and nobody will be able to comment on a draft decision. You're going to, you know, basically instruct counsel what type of draft that you want to see. You want to see a draft denial decision, do you want to see a draft approval with conditions, and what those conditions would be, and also what the waiver decisions would be? But that would follow the, you know, that hearing on the 30th.
But we could, excuse me, we could discuss some of the waiver requests tonight.
No, we're going to.
Oh, okay.
We're not leaving after this vote.
Oh, okay.
So, would there be an expectation that the applicant would meet with the select board to discuss the details? Because I don't think we have the details to represent to the select board.
No.
We have nothing.
So, I think the other part, too, is that municipal purchases take a certain period of time.
Yes.
And I think they're, if they're hard and fast on the 120 days, that may not be possible to have it completed within that time.
Mr. Calhoun, Mr. Freeman? Should I comment, Mr. Freeman?
Not sure I heard the first part, but if, if Noreen is asking if we can approach the Select Board, unfortunately, they don't want it to happen that day. I don't, I'm not to put anybody on the spot, but I think Mr. Brown is here, who wants to comment, and we respect it. As I say, we respect, you know, that's why we're dealing with you. You guys do have the tough job. But, you know, it's fruitless to just say, we'll ask the Select Board again. That's why I spoke to Peter Johnson's staff, and the report back was, no. They have to hear from the zoning board that that would be something that you would like to pursue. We'll certainly meet with them. We'll make ourselves available to meet, you know, at an open meeting, 48 hours, you know, notice posted on, the agenda posted. But again, we're stuck.
Would you suggest a working group on this one issue then be formed?
Sure. Do that in a heartbeat. I mean, I'd still like the request of the Select Board to get that moving, but yes, absolutely, we'd do a workshop.
I'd like to offer, if in fact you go down the working group, road, workshop, whatever you want to call it, which I personally don't prefer, I would suggest that it would be much better if it were held in something like the cafeteria where things could be laid out, where the people, public could be around and actually actively participate in the process. I, I think that would be more open and friendly, and quite honestly, the only way I'd support it.
But they, Mr. Chairman, but that's not the way a 40B work group works. Work group is kind of confined. Everybody can attend, but who can speak is limited.
Right.
George, I'm looking for guidance here in terms of an appropriate motion to resolve the issues.
Well, are you still talking about a working group or?
Well, just to make sure that, one, we can, well, get our extension, and, two, that we can, that somebody on the Board has the legal authority to approach the Board of Selectmen and/or discuss this with them.
Yeah, I mean, you could appoint, you know, a representative, either the Chair or another member, to follow up with the, I don't know if you have a town administrator or town manager, and then somebody to speak to the, either the Chair of the Select Board, put it on their agenda. I mean, you know, you don't have, the Select Board has to meet an open session about this. If, if they wanted to consider, you know, fair market value or possible purchase prices, that sometimes presents an opportunity for discussing something in an executive session, but it would pretty much have to be an open discussion that they had if they wanted to act on it as a Board. You know, and, I mean, we don't have to be crazy either. People can make phone calls and find out what groups may or may not be interested. If there's nobody interested, then they come back and you're, you're dealing with the site as proposed and the evidence that was presented. You're always free to, you know, impose conditions regarding maintenance of natural areas. And then if the developer appeals it, you defend the decision on appeal. So there are different options on it. I think it definitely, you know, helps to get a little more time if you want to do a work group. It depends on how you want to do that, if you want to have one member.
I don't know if we just necessarily need a full work group. This is just, one issue is to determine if there's an appetite regarding acquisition of these eight acres through the town or through a nonprofit, so.
Yeah. So I would accept, you know, to just explore that one issue, you could just agree to accept the continuance of the public hearing and just see where you're at on the 30th.
I honestly think that the three acres should be removed and maintained by the developer slash owner to ensure that the likelihood that it remains undisturbed, undisturbed would be far better.
Is there a member of the Board that would want to join me in approaching the Selectmen if this is voted on?
It's up to the Chair, to the side.
Okay. All right, so first issue is, do we, is there a motion to request a extension to the May 30th? Is that the correct date, Noreen?
Yes.
To May 30th?
Tell them move.
Give that to Suzanne, second. All right, roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Petrucci, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Peterson, aye.
Morse, aye.
I, I have to say that as much as this is appealing, it's kind of an 11th hour thing. I, I can't say that I don't see it as chaff being thrown down to obfuscate the obvious overuse of this parcel and the shortcomings of the project in general. And I just, I, I'm, I'll be the only one, but I'm going to vote no.
Duffy, aye.
Time aside, but I'm not a voting member.
Motion carries. And will the Board authorize myself and Mr. Duffy to communicate regarding the issue of acquisition of the Board of Selectmen and/or town manager?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Tell them move.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Petrucci, aye.
Murphy, aye.
Peterson, aye.
Morse, aye.
Senator, nay. Duffy, aye.
Time aside.
Thank you.
You just want to confirm with the applicant, did they grant that extension?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I'll do it in writing also, so.
Thank you. For the record, will so indicate. Continuing to move on then, response to final items from peer review and the Board.
I think it's probably most efficient to have Phil go through it, and again, not intending to read every word, et cetera, but highlights naturally, of course, with questions to Phil, as you wish.
Thanks. Do all the Board members have on May 3rd a letter with all the attachments to it?
Is that what you sent out?
Yes, the packet that was out today.
He submitted this on the 3rd or 5th of May. I won't put it up.
Is this the one? I was going to say, I have too many that say May 3rd. Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? The letter that stated May 3rd, is it from the Eastley LLC? Is that what we're talking about? Which letter are we talking about?
Yes.
This one? Can you see it?
I can't see, but May 3rd, the Eastley LLC along the top, yes. Yes. And I guess just to itemize, to accompany that, is a letter from Allen and Major from us, also dated May 3rd, which was the engineering response. And then associative with that are the updated set of site plans, also dated May 3rd, noted as revision two. So we have everything.
Why are we doing this before we get any new plans?
We're proceeding as if they're going with the original plan that is submitted with the buildings in the southeastern corner. Your right answer.
Okay, thank you. So that's, those are the itemized documents that were submitted back through the Board Administrator last week, and I'll go very quickly through them so we can move on to more substantive discussions. If there's any Board questions, please interrupt me at any time and let me know. The slide just simply indicates what I just itemized for you. These are the plans that I'm referencing for, I guess, simplification, Plan A. So these are all based on Plan A, everything that we're talking about.
Create a record.
Thank you. What you'll notice, and, and Mr. Chair, you had, you had asked me a question earlier about how we reacted to the neighbor at 371 about some of the proximity issues relative to the property, and I'll draw your attention to this slide. We've added this inset detail, which I'm going to talk about in slightly greater detail as we move forward in the slides, but we've provided some additional dimensional detail and landscaping to hopefully address some of those concerns that were raised at the last meeting. This remains the site plan, site layout plan, same number of buildings, same number of parking spaces, no substantive changes there. Next slide, please. Your, your review engineer had provided a response package back to us dated April 30, 2024, which is based on the revision one set of site plans. Paraphrasing a number of issues, they agreed with our responses to a lot of the engineering-based comments. They reiterated their initial concerns regarding waivers that they're deferring the decision to the Board. So what I've done, our response letter was based on choosing information that we could respond to. Comment number 12 is that your peer review consultant noted that we had agreed to provide bike racks at all of the buildings, but we had incorrectly omitted one at Building C. We have added that, just simply notes that. They have added a comment that on the subdivision plan, in order to meet the requirements of a Form C submission in accordance with the bylaw, we had to provide a radius map of all streets 300 feet adjacent to the proposed subdivision, along with the dimensional layout. We have provided that on the plans, and I'm happy to share that with the Board. Similarly, under a Form C application, the town requires there's a signature block on all of the plans. We had previously only had it on Sheet C 100, as we thought that's where the Board would endorse the layout changes. Your consultant asked us to put it on all of the plan sheets, given that the totality of the plan set compromises, or, excuse me, comprises the subdivision plan. So we've added a signature block, again, very, very granular, and that's response 36. Comment 41, they make note that we are required, or they're, the Beals and Thomas is suggesting by condition that we provide an illicit discharge statement signed by the owner and a stormwater pollution prevention plan. What both of those are, those are relative to how the site is operated post-construction, relative to the stormwater, that the applicant agrees they will maintain the stormwater system, and they will not create unauthorized connections into, into the stormwater. That's the illicit discharge statement. The stormwater pollution prevention plan is a federal permit regulated under the NEPTES program with the EPA, and it will outline how the site is maintained during construction to prevent runoff off property that might have sediment involved with it. It's a document we're certainly prepared to provide. They suggested that it be a condition of any permit approval that this Board is willing to issue. We simply note, we agree, we will provide that. It's usually provided prior to construction, which we're happy to do. Comment number 44, your applicant, your consultant noted, really observatory, that the majority of the snow storage remains on Lot 2, and areas to the south and east are not depicted on Lot 1, and they just wanted to reference that snow storage was paramount here. We are just supporting, as I mentioned to this Board two weeks ago, there is no storage, so snow storage noted on the south and east portions of the site, as that's where we are proposing the additional landscaping to supplement the natural berm, so we're not cross utilizing that area for snow storage, as we want it to be landscaping that is not disturbed by winter conditions. Comment 46, your consultant noticed there were a couple of areas of light trespass from our proposed photometric plan, and I respectfully note that the Board had some difficulty in terms of understanding where the light was on site and what all of those numbers on our plans represent. The totality of it needs to basically state that the number at the property line has to be 0.0, meaning there is no light spillover off the property. The Board had asked me several questions about that last meeting. I'm happy to go over it again. But your consultant noted that we had a couple of blips on the north side of the site where there was a little bit of light trespass, meaning the number was not 0.0. We have corrected those values, so you have a properly conducted photometric plan showing there's no light trespass. In terms of the connection, just to be clear, the lighting has not changed. It's still LED lights. It still has the elevations I talked about. It is still, as noted on the plans. In the model that was created, it did not take into account the natural buffers that would remain. The natural buffers, as the Board can imagine, would filter light just through the leaves and the tree and the bark, and that takes the light levels down that we meet that 0.0. So we've just provided that in response to your consultant, again, through the Board. Comment 49. Yes, I'm sorry.
Didn't the Conservation Commission recommend a fence on top of the berm to block the light and protect the?
So, through the Chair, so the Conservation Agent issued a letter today discussing the landscaping that we were proposing, and one of their, one of their suggestions, not as an implementation, they say, they said fencing could also be used. We're not soliciting the use of fencing.
Mr. Chairman, we're taking other questions. Do you mind taking questions?
I don't mind. Fluid is better.
How would 46 be enforced? I mean, how do you measure 0.0 light? How's the, it's not us, it's Bill and Commissioner.
Sure.
Do you know how you measure that? How do, how does anybody enforce that?
I do. It's, it's challenging to enforce it, quite frankly. We are providing to you by my ethical endorsement of the plans and your consultant's thorough engineering review of the plans that we meet the design standards for that 0.0. In terms of enforcement, should you want your commissioner to verify it, they could utilize a light meter, which is just a bulb in a box, and they stand wherever they want, and there's a digital readout that tells them what the light is. And that, and that's it. Comment 49, again, from the consultant. We recommend a potential condition of approval that the location of the landscape ground cover types be coordinated with the Board of Health prior to installation. We just, we agree, if the Board is willing to consider that, we agree with that condition. We didn't provide all of the definitive detail on the ground cover, but they, your consultant suggests the Board review it. That, that's fine. So just noting it. Lastly, similar condition, we don't note in irrigation well necessarily, but any wells would have to be approved by the Board of Health, coordinated with and through, through the Board of Health. So that summarizes the engineering responses to Beals and Thomas, to your consultant. Also in the package of information to, as a response to the Board, a question was raised in terms of water accuracy, excuse me, water capacity, and I had noted that we were working with the Water Department to schedule a hydrant flow test on the existing line at Sandwich Road. That has been completed. Those results are, they're what's on the screen. It's been submitted back to the Board. It affirms that when we tested it, we had 65 PSI pressure in the water line tested with the Water Department last week. That's sufficient pressure for us to extend the water line, feed the buildings, use that water source for, for fire flow, which was comments and discussion we had at the last And then we have charts and graphs. We can, we can talk about them if you would like. I will, I will keep going, but I'm admittedly, admittedly out of my lane, but I'll, I'll keep going to keep feeding information. There was a question raised at the last meeting regarding the distribution and the required number of accessible units. So what we have cited in the response materials is, is the code, which requires that 5% of the dwelling units are required to be accessible. So of the 300 units, 15 are designed to comply with that. We didn't have that number at our fingertips at the last meeting. Moving on, the next one is accommodations for persons who are deaf or hard of hearing. Similarly, it requires a percentage of that, 2% of those, so of the 300 units, six. Six are required. Those are provided. If we move to the next slide again, in, in the letter, it also says, where are the ADA units? And the simple response by code is dwelling units shall be proportionally distributed across the total number of units according to the number of bedrooms, size, quality, price, and location. Said more simply, they're spread evenly throughout the project. They are not concentrated in a single building or a single corner of the building, which also answers one of the members' question, are they proximate to? the members' question, are they proximate to the external ADA parking? And the answer is not necessarily, because they need to be distributed across the site in order to meet this requirement, and across the buildings, and across, you know, up and down floors 1, 2, 3, and 4. So we'll meet that requirement. If the board so chooses, we can talk about, there was some additional discussion on trash, trash enclosures, mail centers, deliveries. So we brought with us tonight examples of the constructed conditions from other projects that Saxon has completed. They are in the printed materials, we could talk about them. They're noted on this plan, which is from the Hanover Colony Place Apartments, which is a 320-unit apartment project. And in there, we have similarities to what we are asking for this board to consider, which is a mail center, which is the bus stop, which is the trash center, which is banked parking. So all of those elements are there, banked parking for this site plan is here, mail center here, trash and recycling, and then our bus stop. So we have qualified experience on providing all of those in similar projects. Jack, if you wouldn't mind. And then also in the package, this is the nature of the trash enclosure that we could provide, which is fully enclosed, fully screened, it is not visible, it is gated, all of the trash debris recycling is encapsulated, it is routinely emptied. I think some of the members had asked, well, is that enough? And the number of units for trash and recycling can be accommodated by frequency of pickup, meaning if we have one and it's filled in three days, it needs to be retrieved every two days or three days. And that's part of the operational aspects of the site. But fencing will be selected, it'll be complementary to the project, the natural environment, et cetera. Next slide. We also provided, I know the board sort of had some, not necessarily confusion, but some momentary pause about our request for banked parking and the nature of banked parking, and we were requesting permission to show that we can accommodate the full build-out of parking, but not necessarily build it at occupancy, build it when we needed it by demand. The Hanover precedent project parking data provides for you five sites, Hanover Westford Valley, Hanover Andover, Hanover Foxborough, Hanover at the Pine Hills as completed, and the Waukegan Colony Place as proposed. And it really defines that based on the number of units, the ratio of spaces per bedroom is about one space per bedroom. And that empirical data is what suggests to you that we can ask to bank some of that parking, that we, quite frankly, we don't need it at occupancy, but we would be prepared to build it later on. You'll find in our responses back, should the board continue to have issue with that, we'll build the parking, we can withdraw the waiver and build the parking.
I think we have a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Relative to that, I've mentioned that the, I think the average tenant in this place, I mean, with the rents being 4,300, the likelihood that a three-bedroom unit is only going to house one car is quite unlikely. And further, when we asked how many employees were going to be parking, you gave us a number of five and reduced to three at build-out. We owned a 66-unit motel room, and I had three, myself and two other people to maintain the grounds, let alone somebody in the office answering the phone and various and other sundry ancillary positions that are obviously going to be here. I honestly question the, between all that, I question the banked parking. I think you should have what the numbers dictate. Otherwise, you're going to be building them out in three months. I mean, you honestly think that three people are going to staff this place after it's filled? I don't think that's realistic.
Okay. Thank you, noted. I mean, we're presenting to you the option regarding the banked parking. You know, we suggest we can accommodate it, and it could be efficiently utilized. If the board disagreed with that approach and didn't want to allow the relief for the banked parking, we would build the parking, as you suggested.
Thank you. I think it's necessary.
So the next slide now circles back to our discussion regarding 371 Sandwich Road. So to our neighbor, I will acknowledge, apologize and acknowledge that our previous set of plans, we did not have their house shown. That was omitted, we've added that. It's difficult to see on the screen slide, but on, hopefully, the close-ups, it is here. It is very proximate to the property line, plus or minus nine feet here, and plus or minus 12 and 1/2 feet here. Please keep in mind, those are approximate dimensions, we did not access the neighbor's property for definitive survey, so it's approximate. But we'd note that the distance from the existing garage on the property is about 19 feet here, 17 feet here, and then the corner of the existing home from here to the property is about 39 feet. So all totaled, in the front corner, there's roughly a separation of about 52 feet from corner to corner. And to get very definitive, we are providing, from the edge of the roadway, it's 51 feet to the property line. So from the edge of our roadway is 51 feet. So as a reminder, 52 from corner to corner, 51 from the edge of the roadway to the property line, and then add in the delta from the existing home at 371. So we have moved, you know, we have kept the road as far as we can, centered within the Sandwich Road access that we have and the limited frontage with the relative returns that we have. But we are sensitive to the concerns that the plans that have been provided back to the board have detailed additional dense landscaping along the buffer line between those homes, basically everywhere from the edge of the home back to the rear of the property to increase that shielding effect. So the landscaping would provide a lighting screen, it would provide sound deadening aspects, but to mitigate that condition that the neighbor was suggesting during the last meeting. And again, as referenced, this is the existing home, this is the existing garage, this is our proposed roadway/driveway, and then everywhere through here is the existing landscaping. So we've provided some additional screening to address that concern. And the screening, in terms of landscaping species, landscaping variety, is designed to be shrubbery, it's designed to be evergreen, so in the wintertime, the leaves don't fall and suddenly the screening is opened up. It is designed to be a thickened hedge to make sure that screening exists year-round. It will be a mix of evergreens as the base, some deciduous for color, some shrubbery for additional color, just to mitigate the native condition that's out there.
Can you describe what is between the roadway and the property line, like that oblong or that rectangular block?
In here?
Yes.
Yes, of course I can. So this, the rectangle that you're seeing here is our underground drainage. So all of the runoff from the roadway wants to move down towards Sandwich Road, it's collected in these two catch basins, it's treated through our water quality device, and then it's put into chambers underneath the ground to hold and recharge back into the sandy soil underneath. So that's all the infrastructure. What you see on the top is lawn, grass.
Right.
It's grass shoulder, that's how it will present. None of this will be visible to the naked eye. The catch basins in the street, the covers, the access covers for inspection, maintenance, and monitoring, those will be visible in the lawn, but they will be flush and there will be nothing else visible.
So do you know approximately what the distance would be from that drainage structure to the lot line?
So at its closest point would be about 15 to 20 feet right here. And in that 15 to 20 feet will be the landscaping, the supplemented landscaping that we're proposing. And, I'm sorry, in terms of code, the code allows subsurface drainage to be up to 10 feet to a proper line. Yes, sir.
Now, there's going to be diffusers in there that need to be cleaned on a regular basis. This is going to come with a maintenance plan, and I still think also it should probably be bonded, just to ensure that it's properly maintained into perpetuity. But the most of the maintenance will be done in those covers?
That's correct. So yes to your question, they require maintenance, they require annual maintenance, inspection and cleaning, they're done through those covers, yes. We can access the chambers underneath for visual inspection, they can be jet washed, they can be vacked. Yes.
And that's more than yearly, though, is it not?
It's yearly, it's yearly on an underground infiltration system. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the operation and maintenance plan, report, schedule is actually back in the very original submission from last November, because we've been utilizing the chamber systems the entirety of the time. So you do have that already in your materials, and your consultants, plural, have already seen that and reviewed that.
Thanks.
Of course. So this is that area one more time, Jack, one more slide. Admittedly, this may be challenging to see, given the lighting in the room, but this is a cross-section of that same area. This is 371 on the right. This is our proposed roadway right here, sir, you may see, that's the underground drainage that I was just speaking about a moment ago. Center line is approximately here, the divided median. This is our drop-off zone, this is our multimodal path here. The property line, it's a darkened line right here. To denote, yet we know, they are close to the property line. The additional supplemented landscaping, which doesn't translate well on the visual slide, is in there and is designed to be at least at six feet in height at install, and will only grow and get thicker from there. You want me to keep going? You go.
If the board would like to continue in their packet that we gave you, what we did is we went through and we put together additional conditions that addressed the various items that have come up during the hearing process, so that the board can consider those, edit them. And the attempt was to address things that you asked us about, like the landscape buffer, what would happen, would we indeed restrict it when we're done, et cetera, those type of things. And you can read through them. It's approximately six pages. It includes things such as a prohibition on short-term rentals, the bus stop improvements, the playground improvements, bike storage requirements, which you asked us about, EV parking improvements, and other onsite improvements, as well as a proposed protection, total protection plan. And then there's also a recommended condition as it relates to local preferences. And I could be here all night, but there is approximately 30 conditions which we have taken a first crack at providing to the board.
Phil just pointed out to me, many of these conditions originate from your peer review in the various town departments. So if you go back through the notes, you can find where the points came forward.
Go ahead, Mark.
As whatever plant it is you decide to build is evaluated, and the amount that's released, whether it be 10 milligrams or 3 milligrams, would you not upfront agree to remove that from the surrounding neighborhood through the plant?
The plan that we have put forward will be vetted and approved by DEP, and whatever requirements we have to meet for DEP, we'll be meeting. We put forward the nitrogen levels, we're not going to go to DEP and ask for the 10, which is what their permits are based on. We're going in at 5, and we're following the exact same language you have for your treatment plant with a goal of maintaining three parts of nitrogen on a 30-day rolling average. So we're copying the town's best-in-class quality permit.
But the?
And if you read it, we included the language right from your current DEP permit.
But the reality is, this town is about to spend tens and tens of millions of dollars to remove nitrogen and phosphorus from the Great Pond, which transits there through the Coonamessett River. So would you not agree upfront to remove that via the houses in the neighborhood? So you would, in effect, be a net zero contributor?
Sewer the neighborhood.
Not the neighborhood, the equivalent amount that you contribute to remove.
If at the end of the day, DEP determines that, and the town wants to do it, they can do it. If you look at, Jack, can you help?
Certainly.
Could I ask Mr. Pucci a question in the interim?
Certainly.
Could we condition this to say there could be no net increase in nitrogen coming from this property? I know DEP issued the permit, but this would be our condition.
Right, I need to review the operative documents before I can tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, listen.
This is from the preliminary watershed plan that the town is working on right now. And the audience might not be able to see it, but this area up in here, this area, you know, it's in a dark blue color. Potential septic improvement area. Note, based on a septic performance level of 10 milligrams of nitrogen per liter. That is the goal of the current wastewater plan that the town is doing. By us providing at 5 or better, we're already making an improvement. The additional item, what we're doing is potentially, the town would get credit because we would be able to provide 300 opportunities for people to live, and the nitrogen loads and the performance will be better. If the town is going to create more housing, you're going to have sprawl, people will have to go and build in other areas, and the problem will grow. By doing a onsite private wastewater treatment system, we're basically copying what the town is doing. The goal is to sewer the town. We're doing it, but we're doing it on a small basis. And if DEP elects and decides to do it, and is looking for you to tie in, we will have the ability to work with you on that.
Excuse me. But at the end of the day, and the bottom line is, the fact remains that you're going to contribute nitrogen and phosphorus to the area we're trying to clean up.
There is some level of nitrogen that is healthy, and you need it.
Well, we've already exceeded that by far, so that's the reason why the whole sewer...
I'm not going to argue with you, Mr. Finneran. This is going to be fully vetted through the DEP, it's not going to, it's not a permit that you guys can grant for us, I wish you could. And it's going to be a long process, very thoughtful process, but I would prefer not to spend all night arguing about nitrogen with you, sir.
Well?
Tony?
May I ask a question? With regard to the wastewater treatment plant, I just want to make sure I understand, because it's in your additional conditions, paragraph 1, when you present the application for the permit, your design engineer will be designing... the permit, your design engineer will be designing it so that it works with no more than 5 milligrams per liter, with using best efforts to, on an average concentration of 3 milligrams per liter. So in other words, the design that'll go into DEP will achieve 5 milligrams per liter per day with best efforts to achieve an annualized average concentration of 3 milligrams. Am I correct? Did I say that correctly?
I believe you read it correctly.
All right, then I understand, thank you.
Would you like us to go through the conditions and, I mean, there's...
Oh, the board would like to proceed.
If you want to read them yourselves and...
Will this be waived?
No.
Go to waivers? Conditions. Personally, I would prefer to get the conditions at our last meeting, as well as give us time to digest or our legal counsel to review and then take comment then.
I've got 60 pages of notes to go through, and I'm not ready to do that tonight.
So you'd rather wait?
Yeah.
Where is the conditions?
Can I approach?
Certainly.
They're in the back.
Okay, I'll break them down, thank you.
You got an extra copy, please.
Do you rather wait?
Definitely like to wait. I guess a question on process on conditions, is Attorney Pucci going to draft his first cut of the conditions and then we would review those and add or subtract our comments to that? What's just the process?
Usually the other way around.
Usually is, but I'm not a 40B expert, so I was kind of hoping to have some additional guidance to start things off, but if the board wants to just work on that way too, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I think we have to first decide approve or deny, and then we get into, well, approve or deny with conditions.
Yeah, it's helpful to have that discussion, it's helpful to have it while the public hearing is open, you know, to get a consensus from the board, what are you looking at? Do you want to deny, and if so, what types of issues are you looking at? Do you want to approve with conditions? If so, what types of conditions are you looking at? What waivers are you interested in? And then what I would recommend doing is, based on that consensus that I get from the board, I would then draft a decision for you to then come back before you in a public process. Again, I've done it both ways, while the public hearing is still open, look at a draft decision, or present the draft decision during your deliberations. It'll be a public meeting that you have, but you won't be able to take any input from anybody on that, either the applicant or the public, although the draft decision itself would be a public record if it's something that you're then going to deliberate on.
And Mr. Chair, we're thinking in the past, I think, during this discussion, we can always ask for clarification without necessarily engaging in back-and-forth with the applicant.
After the close of the hearing?
Yes. Let's say there's something comes up and we need clarification of a particular point that can only come from the developer.
Yeah, I don't love it.
Okay.
Once your hearing is closed, really, you're done getting any input from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. I don't totally disagree with what Mr. Pucci said, but on the other hand, most of the time, you don't really know what you're going to do until the end, and most of the time, in my experience, a draft decision with conditions is drafted without that meaning that there's indication from the board that they're going to approve it with conditions. The conditions would speak to all of the things that you're concerned about, which we in good faith tried to do, but of course, it should be reviewed by Mr. Pucci and you and any additional conditions, but, you know, it does help expedite, which is supposedly part of 40B, to be able to go over it when the hearing is open, and I'm not trying to make extra work for Mr. Pucci, but that's what he's here for. Since we did take the first step to try to be helpful, it's really not a huge ask, again, not in any way diminishing the time that he might need to review, but it just seems, under these circumstances, it could be very helpful to indeed have those conditions reviewed as you're going to do, like you all just said, between now and the next hearing, and to have Mr. Pucci's input. And again, that doesn't in any way indicate or bind you to approving the project, you could still deny it, but if you approve it, clearly there's very strong indication already of the areas of concern that you had, and we, again, I'm being redundant, but we tried to address them, but of course, you might have more things to address in conditions. So I would respectfully urge you to, in addition to reviewing them on your own, that you would authorize Mr. Pucci to review and to supplement conditions that he thinks are reasonable based on your concerns, knowing full well that that doesn't mean you're going to approve the project.
I go back to what I said earlier, I've compiled a list of possible conditions that I might consider or have considered, do consider necessary, and I think we should all lay out there what we're thinking for the benefit of us, as well as the public and the applicant. I have a number of conditions that fall under four categories: public safety, density, wastewater and wetlands protection, and the related conservation issues. I think that if we don't lay them out there first and somebody just comprises them on their own in a draft decision or whatever, it may miss what we're thinking.
Jerry, then George.
I guess my concern is, if we all go through 10 or 20, 30 concerns, we're going to go well beyond when we close the hearing, which we have to make a decision. How many days?
40 days.
40 days. So I think we're going to have to have some consensus that through the chair, through Mr. Pucci, we indicate to him some of our concerns, he consolidates them as best he can, then it can come back to us to discuss it, well, you missed a point here, I don't like that. I mean, we'll never make the deadline.
Yeah, no, that would make sense. I mean, I'm not, I would not recommend me drafting a decision for you based on just what's before you, because I haven't heard from any of the members about how they're leaning on the project. Look, I'm not a board member, and I'm not going to draft a decision unless I have a reasonable, you know, view of what the consensus of the board is and what it is that you want to be looking at. Are you looking at a denial decision? Or are you looking at an approval with conditions? And if an approval with conditions, what types of conditions do you want to see in there? You know, and then that would be enough to draft a draft decision on, but until you have that discussion as part of a public hearing, you know, I won't be able to provide that to you.
Mark.
Didn't they both just make my argument?
Sort of, yes. The question is, do you want that tonight or do you want that at the next hearing?
I want it when you guys want to give it to me. I mean, you know, so it's either tonight or the next hearing session, but I need that type of input before I could put a draft together.
Right.
The next, the next hearing on the 30th of May, we're going to discuss what happened when you and I go talk to the selectmen. That shouldn't take very long. It's either going to be yes or no, and then we'll have, basically, won't we have the rest of the meeting to discuss conditions and waivers?
I would suggest yes.
And the new plans?
No, we don't have to discuss the new plan because it's only, are we interested in it or not?
No. Again, I think, at least starting out with some of the potential conditions that I have would find out if the board agrees, and it might help others in their thinking to arrive to what they think important conditions would be, because, I mean, if we're going to build some affordable housing here at this location, I mean, it's going to have to be conditioned. So I think the sooner we get to it, the better.
I disagree, Mark. The only concern I've got is that the conditions that, at least for me, that I would be looking to impose are radically different depending on the location of these buildings.
The other, Mr. Chair, the other thing is, I think you're asking for a straw vote, I'm not sure if that's allowable, which way we're heading right now, yes or no, and that would shape the conditions to be defensible, whether it's a yes or no.
Well, your counsel seems to be asking you that. I have no problem, I, not meaning to be self-serving...
So we let him learn privately.
Or go to Mr. Goody Two Shoes, but I do believe that you would do the right thing and grant the permit as opposed to deny it. The devil's in the details, obviously, about the condition, but if you, you know, based on Mr. Pucci's suggestion, if you want to take a, you know, a straw vote, it's not binding, so it is legal, in my opinion, you know, you can certainly do that. If the consensus is that you're going to deny it, then maybe that's the end of the story, but I would respectfully say I don't think you're going to do that.
Mr. Chair...
Tony?
Why not try and put some order to this by having each board member write up the conditions they'd like to have considered so that it comes to this, so that it comes to this board that night on May 30, and you can run down through each one? That way, at least, we all have an opportunity to see that. Think about it, I don't know what the process would be, but at least have everybody write up their conditions versus having a disorderly conversation that goes on...
Potential open meeting issue.
Yeah.
Although, if they're submitted directly to you as counsel, I don't believe that constitutes a, I'll defer to you as to whether that constitutes an open meeting violation.
Yeah, you can do it. I don't love it. I would, it's a cumbersome process to go through it in the public hearing, but that would be what I would recommend, is that the members, if you want to put something in writing just to formulate your thoughts, put it in writing, bring it to the meeting and discuss it, you know, but I don't love, you know, people giving various input to counsel.
I like to keep, I want to make sure this is just transparent and open. Mr. Finneran wants to put on, I think, the record this evening what his proposed conditions are, and I'm inclined to let him do that. I think Mr. Duffy and I myself are going to wait till the next meeting. Anybody else?
I'm waiting for the next meeting.
Wait for the next meeting.
How much time do you need, Mark?
Five minutes?
Sure.
All right, as I say, they fall under, and I mean, if we're going to approve this thing, it's going to have to be with conditions, and they fall under the four topics: public safety, density, wastewater, wetlands protection, and this is just a rough outline, but I think under public...
Especially slowdowns of George, you think? No.
Well, I can give him a copy. Well, actually, no, I can't. Under public safety, I think, no matter where the location is, I mean, the impact of this project doesn't change, especially on Sandwich Road, and I think that the applicant should install at his expense a crosswalk across from the entrance of the development, similar to the one at Palmer Avenue with safety lights. And these next ones can amount to as little as signage, but to construct at the expense of the applicant a sidewalk, as I say, on the west side or either side of Sandwich Road from 375 down to Brick Hill Road, to sign and reconnect at the expense of the applicant at the following intersections, as I said, this could be as little as signs, a lot of this stuff has already been recommended by the county commission. Sandwich Road and Brick Hill Road, I would suggest that a right-turn lane heading south is prudent, it's already necessary, and it's only going to be greater impacted in a greater effect by this development. And the town does own that property, so we could build a right-hand lane there without a problem. Sandwich Road and Route 28 is still an issue. It's a TOF even by the Traffic Consultants' Report, which is as bad as it gets, and it's getting worse. And as I say, I think the number of cars coming from this place is greatly underestimated. Other intersections are going to be oxbow in 28, Thomas Lander's Road, Turner Road, they were already flagged by the county in its previous assessments, and Brick Hill and Trotting Park Road to a lesser degree, as well as Locust Field Road. And as I said, some of this could be as little as signage, but the addition of the traffic from this is definitely going to impact things, there's just no arguing about it. And density, I think we should remove the fourth floor from all of the buildings, either that... Either that or remove one residential building. I think as far as the wastewater is concerned, this should be a net-zero contributor, as we're spending tens of millions of dollars to clean this up as it is. I think we should require the applicant to return to the ZBA within 90 days following the issuance of wastewater discharge permit by the DEP, so the ZBA can modify, if necessary, any conditions of the comprehensive permit, or simply remove the equivalent amount of nitrogen from the surrounding neighborhood through their plant. And then the wetlands and the wildlife, I think we should require the applicant to commission the necessary studies at its own expense and develop plans in conjunction with the Fallowment Conservation Commission in the following area. And these might be minor things, but still to go through. Storm damage prevention, including forest preservation, water pollution control, protection of the fisheries, shellfish, wildlife, plant species and habitats, agriculture, aesthetics, recreation and agriculture, and aquaculture, excuse me. And plans are re-approved by the ZBA prior to the issuance of any permits, and I think that certainly the lion's share of these should be considered. Quick and easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other presentations, even Mr. Calhoun or Mr. Finneran?
Good to go, brother.
Okay.
Would you like to round off your day?
Sure.
I'll be very, very brief. Last time we went through the waivers, you should have in your package, again, attached to, appended to, the May 3, 2024 letter from the Easterly is the waivers as revised, revision two, dated April 26, 2024. I will just draw your attention to two waivers. Item number, and please keep in mind, these are just, these are not redlined, these are clean, black-lined, final versions. Line item number three, waiver number three, excuse me, Article 14 Dimensional... One moment, Lee.
Phil, I'm just trying to find my spot. We're on this one called the Easterly.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Waivers, the one called the Easterly, May 3.
You don't want to go through these one at a time from the beginning?
I'm sorry.
You don't propose to go through these one at a time in order?
We, so we went through them one at a time, one at a time, last meeting. I'm only going to highlight only two that have changed.
Oh, okay.
If you would like to walk through all of them, I'm happy to do that.
Oh, there were...
Just do the two.
Just do the two.
Just, please tell me the numbers, though.
Of course, are you, do you have the waiver?
Yep.
Page, okay. Waiver number three, Article 14 Dimensional Regulations, Section 240-170 regarding building height, and we made two clarifications here. So one, under the section requirement, and I'll read it, it says, "The basic maximum building height for principal structures is two and a half stories, not to exceed 35 feet, and for accessory, not to exceed 22 feet." We did append for clarification, quote, "For agricultural uses, structures may have a maximum height of 50 feet." That's from the bylaw. The requested waiver is only a clarification waiver requested to allow for five, four-story structures as shown in the site development drawings with a height of 50 feet to the top of the parapet, and this is the appendage, and a height of 53 feet to the elevator mechanical penthouse. And that was added to include the absolute maximum height of the buildings, as the member had alluded to. The next change is just drawing your attention to waiver number five, same page, Article 23 Parking Requirements, 240-106, number of spaces, the section requirements regarding parking. The waiver request highlighted the applicant is currently in compliance and providing 517 total parking spaces, where five... and providing 517 total parking spaces, where 517 would be required based on the bedroom count. The applicant requests a waiver with the intent to reserve construction of 23 parking spaces, as shown on the site development drawings, that would reduce the parking below a compliant level. I just draw the board's attention to that waiver request. We maintain it. If the board prefers, build the parking as is shown, don't utilize banked parking, we would delete that waiver. All other waivers remain the same. We have simply condensed it, removed the ones that were no longer applicable, and restructured during the last meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Jared, just for you. You said 23, but in my--
27.
27.
I apologize. 27.
Okay.
27. I'll blame the eyes. 27.
Mark?
Did you have any more you were going to go through?
Those are the only two that have changed.
Okay. I have to comment on one of them, and I don't know where it is here, but there was also a comment on it, and that's removing the overdig or from the property. There, for instance, in the state of Connecticut, in many towns and townships, you're not able to remove any topsoil from a property. And this being old farmland, and the way it was mentioned in the waiver, to remove it to any, whatever, landscape, someone that's going to sell the topsoil, I don't think that any, the possibility of any of that topsoil being harvested and sold off should be part of this project, and I think that that waiver should definitely not be granted. You have the pit, you have the ability to store it, and I just, I mean, I'm not saying you're going to do it, but it happens all the time, where they skim the topsoil clean and sell it off. And this is agricultural land for centuries, and I just, I personally would never vote for that waiver. And I think that maybe you should reconsider how you're going to do that, because it's just a bad idea.
Thank you for the note. I think you're referring to Mr. Fineran, waiver number 12.
Yeah, it could be. But that's exactly how I feel about it. And as I said, there are, in the entire state of Connecticut, it's not allowed, and you know yourself, there are plenty of other places that it's not allowed. And the amount of farm, ancient farmland that's there, that should particularly apply to this place, for sure.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, on the waivers. Happy to field any questions.
Board, any questions?
No.
All right. So I believe it's just the next steps, what we'd be doing on our next meeting. I think it's fairly clear, we'll have a, very quickly in the next few weeks, we'll know if this is going in a radically different direction, or if there's any appetite from the town or other nonprofits to acquire or attempt to acquire approximately eight acres. And if not, please get ready, review all submissions, look at proposed waivers, proposed conditions and so on, and be prepared to have a lengthy discussion on that issue and what direction we're going.
Just to, just to make clear, as you know, I voted against that. I just want to point out that if, sorry, if you extort one and a half or million dollars from the town for that piece of property, which I would only ever think that you'd want to agree to the five acres, that brings the land cost per unit of this development from $8,000, which is absolutely minimal, down to $1,667 a unit. And I, I just don't like it. I think it's chaff being thrown at us, to be honest with you, at the last minute. Nothing's going to change my thinking.
Mr. Calhoun, before I open up the public comment.
Just wanted to point out that one of the immediate abutters on Meredith Drive just texted and asked that the board, they love option B, and that you hope to work on it during the next two weeks. I don't know who the person is, how they got my number, but they did provide their home address on Meredith Drive, so that was their request.
Very interesting they have this so.
So you got one out of three.
Public comment. Been waiting a long time, ma'am. You're up.
Virginia Rabisa, 502 Sandwich Road. And I have to say, I'm a little disappointed the public didn't get to speak after the Plan B was proposed. But I do have some things to address to that. And I'm talking, these points are kind of like my limited experience as a planning board member. Mr. Duffy may remember the Little Pond Project, which was Save Little Pond, about 20 years ago, when he was town council, and I was the treasurer for that project. And one of the things, over the course of this, these meetings, you know, the fact that the developer has continually said that they don't have to provide certain information, what, I mean, I remember during Little Pond, they were giving us how much fill, you know, down to the, it almost seemed like the ounce of how much fill was going to be required for that project, et cetera, et cetera. So that's been a little disturbing all along. But I was concerned about, a couple of the members made a comment about the five acres, saying, well, that would be an unbuildable lot. Well, the only way that lot will become unbuildable is if it's subdivided off and made conservation land. If it stays within the ownership of the developer, it will always be developable, because they will have access to it from the main property. And I don't know the dimensions, but because they are potentially going to own the sandpit, if they have the frontage there, they could access it from that part of the property. So the only, the only way to call it unbuildable is if it's subdivided off and the town or the 300 Committee or whatever takes ownership. That's the only way. So don't use that terminology at all. And my recollection of 40Bs, and maybe the laws have changed, my understanding was that developers, including the cost of the land and the building, they could only make, I thought, a 20% profit. And I may, you know, that's what my understanding was. But if they're going to get a good portion of their money back by selling a parcel for 1.4, they're, you know, I wonder what the percentage of profit is going to become. And also, regarding that 1.4, just anecdotally, I didn't really speak to anybody at the 300 Committee, but I've heard from a couple of different people. When the 300 Committee was interested in buying this land, I've heard comments that they lowballed the owner or whatever. But obviously, they weren't willing to pay 1.8. So I doubt very much they're going to want to pay 1.4 for five acres. Plus, it takes them a while to raise that money. And even if it's 300 Committee and CPC money, that's a chunk of change to come up with in a short amount of time that we're potentially going to lose out, because it depends on how much time the developer is going to give us to raise that money. So, again, go back to the not buildable, it's buildable until we own it. Oh, dang. The, let's see. And a while ago, I, you know, one of the first meetings I attended, I said, I feel like Saxon is the tail wagging the dog, and we're the dog. And now I feel like they're swinging us over their head, because once again, they've pushed us into a corner, giving us no, you know, no options other than this or this or, you know, that's the case. And they've been that way the entire time. For them to say, just, for example, talking about the, the two tubes that connect the sewer, if Mr. Fineran is correct, and the DPW said that was something we wanted, they're saying the intent is, again, it's language, the intent is to do that. If the town wants us to take it out, we won't do it. So it's not, we're going to do it. It's, you know, they've been asked to do it, and it's like, our intent, but we may not. So we're not really getting any definite, these are all lawyer terms, because lawyers will use certain language to give them a caveat out. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, we were talking about traffic when it came up. I just read in the paper where there's another 40-unit, 40B proposed to be built on Brick Hill Road, and now we're going to have a YMCA complex on the other end of Brick Hill Road. So the traffic in that area, you know, I mean, we can't address that, but just to be aware, it's not going to get less, it's going to continue to get more. But thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Dennis Murphy from Hill Law. I'm here on behalf of the Residential Abutters, but I usually represent environmental groups, land trusts, conservation groups. I think you appreciate the movement to the West. It does solve some problems, but I think that some of those problems were going to get solved in the process anyway. So, for example, the anti-segmentation problem. There are actually strict laws about segmentation. You can't do it under MEPA. So the idea that you could develop one half the site and not tell what you were going to do on the other half, that was never going to fly. I don't think it would have flown in front of this board, but it certainly wasn't going to fly at DEP or MEPA. So the other one is, the length of the dead-end road, your maximum is 500 feet. The road that is in Plan A is more than three times that, I believe. The road for Plan B, I think, is probably only double that, so that does make it better. But it still does not comply and requires a waiver from your subdivision. Having a buffer to the river does make it better for the kumon acid and the watershed and the nitrogen problem. But there are still significant concerns, because the law actually requires nitrogen offsets. So the idea that we're having a negotiation about searing the neighborhood is all very good, but you can actually require it. In fact, the revised regulations that govern Title V on the Cape require it. You can bet that when they go to get a groundwater discharge permit, DEP is going to require it, because they're certainly not going to make the conditions of the groundwater discharge permit noncompliant with the law. In terms of what you're being asked, you all on this board are the sort of keepers of the local protections in Falmouth. So the big ones that I think you ought to think about are, in this zoning district, the coastal pond overlay. That's the first time you've heard this word in the last two and a half hours. This zoning district is the coastal pond overlay district. In that district, you're allowed one bedroom for every 10,000 square feet of upland. That would give you 58 bedrooms. Don't take my word for it, your own peer reviewer told you this in the Beals and Thomas April 30th report. That's your baseline. That's what they could do by right, 58 bedrooms. What they've proposed is 463. That's more than eight times the density. So Mr. Fineran's point about lopping out a building or the top floor still is a very dense project. I haven't done the math, but that's still five or six times the allowed density. There is a really good scientific reason why there is that limitation in the coastal pond overlay district, and that is to protect the watershed that leads to Great Pond and included the Kumon Acid River. So that is a major waiver that has to be evaluated. That dovetails with another waiver that's being requested, because part of the coastal pond overlay district is a requirement that there be an environmental impact statement. Now, the applicant claims it doesn't have to do that, because it's only doing two or four lots, and the trigger is a five-lot subdivision. Well, when the rules were written, subdivisions were how projects got developed. This is the largest development for a long time in Falmouth, maybe ever. And if ever there were a reason to have an environmental impact statement, it's a project of this magnitude. I also believe that, in fact, the five-lot subdivision would trigger it, because you've got lots one and two on either side of the power line. If there are going to be separate lots for each of the two open spaces, and then you've got the right-of-way for the road, so that's five. I'll just mention, because I'm an attorney and I deal with this stuff, you'll follow your own attorney's advice, I question whether you can actually subdivide the five-acre and three-acre open space lots. That's infectious invalidity. It calls into question, because it doesn't have separate frontage and other requirements. So that's another thing to think about. On that theme of environmental evaluation, the last time I was here, there was a debate about the wildlife study. I just want to put a pin in that, because I understand that it may not be mapped by natural heritage, but you have good evidence from reputable sources that it is turtle habitat, not from some lawyer opposing the project. Your own conservation commission and others have actually written in and said that, and even today, proposing mitigation measures to account for that. The purchase and sale agreement actually gives the buyer, your applicant before you, the unfettered right to access the property, to do his due diligence, including things like a wildlife study. So the explanation that you got, that we can't do it because they won't let us, that's not true. Their legal document requires it. So the other point about the three and the five milligrams per liter with the wastewater treatment plant, your own regulations set three. So you're not getting any benefit by saying, okay, well, we're going to get a wastewater treatment system that's at three. That's required in Falmouth, and the superintendent, last time I was here, submitted documentation to that effect. On the subject of the PNS and density, the other point I wanted to make, so that's a binding legal document, and in paragraph four, the buyer and the seller have agreed, they have a deal at 250 units, says it in black and white. They agree to proceed with the transaction of at least 250 units. That's paragraph four of the PNS. I heard here tonight what I consider a threat. HAC stands for Housing Appeals Committee. Those are fighting words where I come from. And in my view, if you were looking at a 300-unit project, that's kind of a laughable threat, because it can't get any worse. What are you going to do to me when you go to the HAC? They can't make it more than 300 units. I tell you that, because I just made the point about the density, because of the sensitive environmental district in which it's in, and the agreement that the applicant has made with the seller, where they have agreed in writing, in a binding legal document, that they have a deal at 250 units. Please don't give them any more than that. The last thing I wanted to suggest, two things. One is, we talked about what you're being asked to give away from the town and its density. I didn't mention the building height, 35 and 50 feet. I laughed out loud when, I know it wasn't meant to be funny. I understand it's an agricultural district, and that agricultural buildings could be 50 feet height in height. These are residences. They don't qualify for that exemption. So the maximum height is 35 feet. You're being asked 50 feet, five times over in five buildings. That is a major waiver request. Lot coverage, the maximum lot coverage is 20%. And this will dovetail to my last point. You're being asked to allow that to be increased to 25 and a half percent. Doesn't sound like a lot, but on a 30-acre site, it ends up being quite a bit. And here was the point I really wanted to drive home. Again, I speak to you as an experienced environmental attorney who's represented land trusts in 40B matters, including with your own town council on Nantucket. Open space is a major protected interest under 40B. It's actually defined in the statute. It's heavily regulated in the regulations. And there is-- And there is precedent for a zoning board to require open space as part of an approval for 40B. So instead of accepting the applicant's ultimatum, like, we'll give you Plan B, but give us 100 or 1.4 million, you could simply condition the project on putting a, what's called a conservation restriction, on eight acres of land that are open space that are shown on the plan, and then it puts the onus on them to take it or leave it, take it to the Housing Appeals Committee and whatever, whatever they want to do. But you have that authority, and there is precedent on Nantucket and elsewhere, and I'd be happy to help the board with that. Thank you very much.
Tommy Zein, 36, Captain Bowenberger Lane. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I want to thank you for your continued perseverance the past six months. It's been quite a journey. I'll be brief, three remarks, less than two minutes. Number one, we have more reasons to show why we need a wildlife survey. There were two new eastern box turtle sightings on the east end of the property within the past 10 days. Other species of animals are coming out of hibernation and plants are emerging. Number two, the weakness that has been presented in all of Saxon's many proposals since our first meeting on November 30th is the information they omit. This omission and lack of transparency hasn't allowed the ZBA to make an informed decision. Saxon has now submitted multiple new documents to the ZBA in the past few days, hundreds, if not 1,000, new pages of information the past 30 days. After Saxon's presentation tonight, we now have a revised plan with new information to consider. Because of this new information, I'm requesting the ZBA keep the record open and extend the open public hearing as long as it takes beyond May 30th. Number three, in regards to the new plan, please do not accept an administrative review of the new revised project. Public comment should be allowed once the final plan is submitted. I will close with this, what I stated at our first meeting in November. Affordable housing was never created to hurt one group to help another. Thank you, and stop Saxon Partners.
Cheryl O'Hair from 371 Sandwich Road. Couple of thoughts from me about this revised plan. The only way the width of the grassy area can get wider is if the road gets skinnier. You can't make up a piece of land that wasn't there before. The distance from the property line to the street cannot widen without something else changing. Number one. Number two, I still don't have the 16 feet from the property line to his first blade of grass under the laws of the subdivision zoning laws. But he's proposing it's no longer a subdivision. So I feel like there's a massive manipulation because he's trying to impose his will on my property and stripping me of any legal right I have to defend it. Furthermore, he was kind enough to propose that he can, if I want, have a row of hedges put in. And I asked him, what problem of mine does a row of hedges solve? And he said, if you don't want them, we don't have to do it. So I just am fundamentally insulted. I don't feel that any of these solutions are truly solutions. And if he wants to sell a piece of the land, build on a piece of land, that, to me, by definition, makes it a subdivision, and that will not alter. My house is still not 25 feet from the property line, no matter whether we alter the landscaping or not. So my position is, although this does improve some little ways that we were complaining, it doesn't solve the issues for 371 Sandwich Road. Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Ralph Herbst, Precinct Eight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't like to just rely on my thoughts and feelings about this project. I like to refer to documents that have been developed by the town, approved by town meeting, which direct you and all of us as to how things should go in the town of Falmouth. I'm going to quote two documents just briefly. In my 14 years on the planning board, we developed a local comprehensive plan that was approved by town meeting. This is not a zoning document. This is a document that talks about the character and the philosophy of how the people in Falmouth want our town to be. So I'd like to just quote something from the local comprehensive plan. "Falmouth's buildings and housing stock have reflected the cumulative needs of the residents from the 1600s to the present." Here's the key of this paragraph. "This historical depth provides part of the charm that draws people to live in the town." Providing for future housing needs, which is what this applicant is proposing, should not, may I say that again, should not negate that which makes Falmouth an exceptional place to live. So what they're proposing is in direct opposition of our local comprehensive plan, developed by the planning board and approved by town meeting. And it's not a zoning document. So they can't get around this. It's up to you, folks, to make sure that the local comprehensive plan and what it says and its philosophy is incorporated in your decision. The new development on Sandwich Road is a, as I said before, one size fits all. And also in the local comprehensive plan, it says, adequate and diverse housing is inextricably bound to the economic health and diversity of the community. Diverse. What they're proposing is absolutely the opposite of that. The other document that I like to refer to is a letter from Kimberly Fish, who's the housing coordinator for the town of Falmouth. And in this letter to your director dated November 14th, 2023, what'd be six months ago or so, she's talking about the prices that this applicant is proposing to rent for these different accommodations. She says, quote, "These prices do not target the need for workforce housing." Now, that's the woman who we've hired to pay attention to housing in the town of Falmouth. I think she knows what she's doing. She spends eight hours a day looking after the housing needs in the town of Falmouth. We ought to pay attention to people like that because we pay them a decent salary. They do a lot of research, and they advise people and boards like you about the details of what these proposals are. It's almost impossible for all of you to look into the details of everything that comes down the line as far as affordable housing goes. That's why the town hired her, and she's doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Kathleen Crowley Braga, 63, Deepwood Drive. Thank you for your time. Unfortunately, Mr. Fineran and somebody tried to shoot you down in this room today because they didn't think your point was germane to this evening. But there is another 375, and it's 375 Civic Center Road. It's in Augusta, Maine. I know the area well because every time we go to Maine, we stop and we stay in a hotel there on our way to Bar Harbor. It is a large parcel of land that was purchased by Saxon Partners in 2021 for $750,000. They went to the ZBA. They got it approved for a 250-unit development, exactly like Sandwich Road in Falmouth. And now it's on the market for $6.5 million with plans in place. But once more, because they're not honorable with their words, intentions, and deeds, they're quite disingenuous. Personally, I think they're liars. They did it again in Lewiston, Maine. Same exact thing. So now you can either go to Augusta, or you can go to Lewiston, Maine, and you can get yourself all this land with these permits in place for these 250-unit apartments. And I will give this to you so that you guys can read this. To me, this is egregious. We're going here, month after month after month, spending all this time. We're not being, obviously being paid for this. You're not being paid for this. So they can ruin the Coonamessett River, destroy our herring run, destroy the wildlife habitats, wreak havoc on our traffic situation. God only knows how much money in taxes I will pay in the future to redistrict the schools or have to get new school buses to go up and down Sandwich Road. This point has been made over and over and over again. But here's my concern. When they do put up 375 Sandwich Road for sale with permits in place for whatever type of development is approved, what will happen to the buffer zone? What will happen to the five acres of land? Can it be developed? Most importantly to me, if this does go through, and Mr. Fineran did make this point a few months ago, is the wastewater treatment facility, if they sell this development to somebody else and XYZ company comes and picks it up, are they going to be held to the same standard to make sure that water is clean and that the Coonamessett River is protected in the herring run and Great Pond? I don't think that they're going to have to be. And that's one of the concerns that I have. This company has a history of doing this. And I think, you know, this is not fun reading, but it took me less than five minutes to find all this information online. And I implore you to please also take the time to look into this. And I'm sure that they're going to have something to say about it, but here it is in print. And I actually contacted the person who wrote this article, and I'm waiting for a return phone call. So if you'd like to speak to them, I'm sure that they would be more than happy for you to interview them or answer any of your questions that you might have. Thank you.
David Calhoun for the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I say one more thing? Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Please move on.
Go to the microphone.
Once more, Coldwell Banker is the commercial real estate brokerage company that has this land in Augusta. If you'd like to see the tax history and the property price and when it's sold and when it's for sale for now.
I wasn't going to speak to her points because none of them are relevant to here, but we take a great deal of pride in what we do. And if you talk to the town of Lewiston or you talk to any of the cities in Maine in which those projects were approved, those were approved in cooperation with the Board of Selectment, the planning board, because there is no 40B in those towns. All of those projects are designed and placed so that they are strategically located directly in front of major medical facilities to provide housing for people that work in the medical industry. We're not embarrassed. We have 22-plus locations across the country. They are very, very successful, and we do an excellent job. If you want to see one of our projects that is just being leased up, you're welcome to go up to Dartmouth Hitchcock Hospital up by Dartmouth College, and you'll see our product. It's first class. It's very well-received, and it's supported fully by the town and the people. This project here, we hope, will be an asset for the town. And I know people don't show up to speak in favor. Who would want to come and sit and be ridiculed just because they think we need housing? If you looked at the video that was produced by the town, you're in a housing crisis. This is one step towards addressing this. This is not a cure, but it's one step that you don't have right now.
Good evening. My name is Allison Jessup, and I live at 701 West Falmouth Highway in Falmouth, Massachusetts. And I do not like speaking in public, as you probably can tell. I want to thank the ZBA for all of your hard work. I want to tell you that I come from a very corporate background, and I appreciate what you're trying to do here, and I appreciate the revision of your plans. But I moved to this town as a suburb and not an urban area, and I'd like to keep it that way. And I come here in support of these neighbors. And I've been in your neighborhood, and I've recently tried to get out on Sandwich Road during a busy time as the season gets busy, and it is getting very, very busy. And it's very difficult to pull out of 375 Sandwich Road, of which I did right now. I pulled in. I came around that old, broken-down business, and I sat there for a good four to five minutes while the traffic went up and down the road in April slash May, and it's very, very busy. There is nothing that I'm going to say here tonight that hasn't already been said. It's very transparent. We've got environmental issues. I am a nurse practitioner at Falmouth Hospital. I live in West Falmouth in a home that's worth over $1 million. I, without my husband's support, could not afford one of your properties at $4,000 a month based on my salary alone. So it is not affordable. And I'm here to tell you that. My family is whole stuff. We preserve land in Hingham. I'm from Hingham. You and I spoke on the phone. I understand your...
Can you speak into the microphone so everyone can hear?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize the microphone isn't working.
It's for the TV, ma'am.
Sorry. Density, wastewater. I love animals. I understand that people want to sell this property and make money. I understand you guys are in the business of making money. My family owns a large corporation outside of Winchester. I'm from Hingham in Winchester. And I just want to say I thank you guys, and I hope we can continue to do our due diligence. I'm disappointed in the invasive nature that Saxon has put forth here. It's not clear, but I want to tell you, as a nurse practitioner in the town, we do need workforce, but this is not affordable for the average person. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board. Kevin Pimental, 83 Meredith Drive. I have already six kids in this East Falmouth neighborhood, my grandkids. I bought the house along with a lot of my neighbors and the abutters for a peaceful, nice, quiet neighborhood. This monstrosity they want to build, it's ridiculous. It's way too big. I've been driving tow truck in this town for over 30 years. Sandwich Road is very, very bad when it comes to motor vehicle accidents. I agree with you, Mr. Fennerin, and Stop Saxon Partners. Thank you.
Why don't you come on and get on the line, ma'am? Come on, I have a queue up. That way we don't have to, we know you're next. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Okay. I've been to Nancy Perry. I live on Pitch Pine Lane, which abuts some of the property as well as a lot of other neighborhoods. I've been to all the GPA meetings. The things that they come up with, say, oh, it's this, that, and something else. All right. Four apartment buildings, whatever we read up there, one bedroom they're considering. Do you know of, even individual housing has at least two bedrooms? All right. 300 units, two cars per unit usually, a husband and a wife. 600 more cars coming out onto Sandwich Road. When they did their traffic study, the stupidest time of the year, and they say, oh, no, there's not that much traffic. You try pulling out onto Sandwich Road in the summertime when visitors are down or tourists, whatever, it takes a little time to get out. I'm going to say something that I shouldn't say, but whatever sleazy hole Saxon Partners came out of, they should just go back. We don't want you.
Peter Cooper, 102 Meredith Drive. I have a question about the thing on the, as she pointed out, Sandwich Road. And I'd like to see the town, perhaps the last week in June, first two weeks in July, put up and get an actual count of what it's like for the traffic in the summertime and not something in the middle of the winter when people aren't even around. The next thing I wanted to address is they moved it, but we still have 300 units, of which, if I'm not mistaken, is it 20% under 40B?
25.
25. Well, I did 20. I'm sorry. Goofed on that. But it comes out to a total of, there are five buildings. One building will all be 40B. So therefore it will remain that there'll only be four. And people with 40B aren't exactly the wealthiest and therefore I can't see having a country club to go play billiards. And as far as going, it's just not making any sense. The building height, he talks about the lights. Well, what about the second, excuse me, the third floor, the fourth floor of the building? We're not going to see the lights in our backyard? There's where you got a problem there with lights. What happens if you have a teenager that wants to have strobe lights at 10:30 at night? I guess, well, don't be able to. My next question is if Saxon Corporation sells these units, the buildings, everything, what happens to the 40B? Will that be sold with it? The buyer who buys it, will 40B be included in there? And will the rent be of that which they could afford? That's the end, I guess. Thank you very much, sir.
Wendy Bissler, President of Coonamessett River Trust. We certainly welcome the idea of possibly protecting that eastern portion of the property. But even then, I still think I would welcome to have a wildlife survey still be conducted on the entire property. We don't know what is there. We still need to know what kind of animals and trees and plants are there that need to be protected. And I echo Ms. Rabiesa's remarks that why would the 300 committee purchase a smaller portion of this land for basically the same amount of money? Plus, we don't know what the town would do if the town was going to purchase this property. We still would have to go through town meeting and that's not happening until November. So there's no guarantee that we're going to have some agreement on this purchase of this property in the timeframe that we're looking at right now. So I think that's something we all have to be aware of. As to the new plan, I just question, how can the board make a, have due diligence on this new plan without detailed plans in place? I mean, how do you know, is the stormwater going to be exactly the same as it was with the previous plan? Is it just being shifted to the west? Or it looks like things have moved around a little bit. So how do you know the stormwater is going to be the same? What about the trash pickup? What about deliveries? Is that all going to be impacted by this new plan? Just the engineering plans in general? I just think there's, you need more time to review this. It just seems like going until the end of the month isn't going to give you the time you need and you're not going to have these detailed plans in place. So I just would urge you to try to slow down and do due diligence to look at all the possibilities of what could happen with this plan. Plus, again, there should be no net nitrogen, no new, no increased nitrogen coming out of this project. The 10 milligrams that you had mentioned, that's not going to, that's not going to cut it. That won't do it. There should be zero. We need zero nitrogen coming out of this property. So thank you so much.
Lynn Sinzali, 3 Meredith Drive North. I'm also the manager of the LLC that owns Zero Meredith Drive North, which is the open space to the east of this parcel. First, thank you for doing your due diligence on this. It's very important to us as abutters to hear the conversations that are happening. I did want to start with that I have personally witnessed the movement of wildlife from that parcel. I have had to block parts of my land away from the coyotes that are looking for new den space. My neighbors have also personally witnessed and photographed eastern box turtles moving within our space. There was a comment made earlier relative to the parcel of five and a half acres to the east of this property or to the east of the project. And I wanted to clarify something. The comment was made that this would be an attractive purchase for the land to help with the connectivity of conservation land from one side of town to the other. For the board and for those listening, I want to just state that east of that parcel, east of that five and a half acres, there is no public access to the Coonamessett River currently. That land is owned by Zero Meredith Drive Resources Real Estate LLC, and I am assuming Harris Hill, but I can't speak for them. We already deal with trespassers riding bikes, both motorized and mountain, across that land in a way to access the Coonamessett River. So I just wanted to clarify that that is not technically a selling point for that land as there is no public access between this parcel and the Coonamessett River from that part. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bill Scully, 45 Green Acres Road. I just can't fathom how they want to get $1.4 million for eight acres of land when they paid 1.8 for the whole thing. Is that how you make your money? I'd like a deal like that, too. I think everybody would. I think it's outrageous. Thank you.
So I believe that this hearing is now will be continued to May 30th. Is there any other business that needs to come before the board this evening? No ring? George? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned, this hearing is adjourned to May 30th.